So I'm not seeing Councilmember Posseca yet, or Councilmember Healy.
Barnacle's not here yet either.
Yeah, I think I do see him. King is here. No, you're right, Barnacle isn't here. Yes, okay, and now I am seeing him, Brian, listed, I'm just not, he doesn't have his camera on. Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, I do.
There you are, there you are, okay, just found you. Okay, so Councilmember Healy, is he on?
Still not seeing him.
I'm working with Aaron to get him another call-in number.
Okay. Okay, so maybe we should go ahead and start, and let Councilmember Healy join us as he is able to. So if everybody is ready, Patrick, are we able to start the meeting now?
Yes, we are, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I would just like to start the City of Petaluma Regular Meeting of the City Council and the Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency, and this is regular session, and I would ask our city clerk to do a roll call.
Barrett?
Here.
Barnacle?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Healy, I will note in the record when he joins.
Thank you.
King?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Posseca?
Here.
Again noted, six of the seven members are present, Councilmember Healy is attempting to join, and I will note the minutes when he has joined.
Thank you, so right now, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, so I will read that, and ready begin. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." And now we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, and now we'll see, there are no agenda changes and deletions to the current agenda, and I will ask our city attorney to see if there's a report out of closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there is no report that is required under Section 54957.1 of the Brown Act, but the council has asked me to report that they've directed staff to approach Kevin Schenckman of the Schenckman Adheus Firm to seek a 90-day extension for the districting transition process, and staff will do so in accordance with the council's direction, and the purpose of that direction from the council is to provide additional time for the public discussion and outreach and input process related to districting in the city. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and I've just been informed that Councilmember Healy is joining us via phone. So now we will go on to a presentation, this is the Petaluma Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan, and I will ask our Assistant Public Works and Utilities Department Director Gina Benedetti-Petnick to introduce our speaker.
Madam Mayor, can I interrupt briefly?
Yes.
I have Martine on the line here, who's a translator for the public hearing item, if you could just give him a moment to provide his remarks to our Spanish viewers.
Thank you very much for reminding me, City Clerk, yes, today we are going to have translation into Spanish of our public hearing item 5A, and in order to get that information to members on our audience who are Spanish speakers, I will ask our translator Martine to give that information now in Spanish.
Martine, are you there?
He's giving the thumbs up.
Martine, we can see you, but we can't hear you.
He's on the Spanish channel.
Okay, all right, Aaron is nodding to that as well.
I guess what we'd tell members of the public listening to this in Spanish, and Martine, hopefully you can translate it, is there is a globe button at the bottom of the screen that says Interpretation, and members of the public wishing to listen in Spanish can click on that button and choose the Spanish channel, which Martine will be able to translate it in directly. Martine, if you can come on to the English channel and repeat that for the members of the public, I don't think we were able to hear that.
We also have Ingrid Alverde, who can speak.
We hear you, Martine. Yes.
No, we don't.
No, we don't, Ingrid.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Can you just translate?
Yes. Buenas noches, vamos a hablar sobre elecciones en distritos hoy más tarde, en el tema 5A, y vamos a tener el canal en español para que puedan oír ese tema. Puedes empujar el globo donde puedes entrar el canal de español, y luego cuando empezamos el tema 5A, puedan escuchar el tema en español. Muchas gracias.
Thanks, everybody, for this group effort, and hopefully this will get done more smoothly as we move in this direction more and more. So thank you, Martine, thank you, Ingrid, and Patrick, and thank you, so it takes a group, so now we'll turn it over to Gina.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett, good evening, City Council. I had the pleasure of introducing the Petaluma Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency, GSA, representatives from Sonoma Water, for joining us tonight. At the city's request, they've come here to provide an update on the now four-year effort to develop, in partnership with the City of Petaluma, the Petaluma Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan. Presenting tonight is Jay Jasper, Chief Engineer and Director of Groundwater Management for Sonoma County Water Agency, sorry, for Sonoma Water. With a Bachelor of Science degree in Geology from UC Davis, and a Master's degree in Civil Engineering from UC Berkeley, Jay's a registered professional engineer in the state of California. He is responsible for the Water Agency's capital projects program, surface and groundwater resource planning and management activities, water use efficiency, and emergency preparedness. Mr. Jasper also serves as Plan Manager for three groundwater sustainability agencies, including Petaluma, and is also the co-chair of the Lake Mendocino Forecast Informed Reservoir Operations Steering Committee. He's the author of published articles and book chapters on topics such as surface water to groundwater interactions, natural filtration processes, riverbank filtration, and integrated water resource management. Also with us tonight is Anne Dubé, the Community and Government Affairs Manager for Sonoma Water, which provides outreach services for Sonoma County's three groundwater sustainability agencies. She also serves as the Administrator for the Petaluma Valley and Sonoma Valley GSA, and is also currently the President of the California Groundwater Coalition. With that, I'll invite Jay and Anne to take the call, I think Anne is steering the PowerPoint, welcome, you two.
Thank you, and I will go ahead and share the screen, and I'll start off our presentation, and then I'll turn it over to Jay. So first of all, thank you so much for inviting us here tonight, we really appreciate the opportunity to talk to the city, and for those of you with short memories or not totally immersed in the water world like we are, the Petaluma, City of Petaluma has been involved in the Groundwater Sustainability Agency ever since its founding, in fact, prior to its founding, city staff and the city attorney were very involved in the creation of the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, which was formed after the passage of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act in 2014. When the act took effect in early 2015, the member agencies from the three basins, Sonoma Valley and Santa Rosa Plain also are affected by the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, started meeting, and Petaluma was staff was absolutely instrumental, as were the council. And so in May, Petaluma adopted a resolution that allowed it, that basically approving the Joint Powers Authority and appointing Councilmember Healy as the Petaluma's representative to the GSA Board, and we have really appreciated his involvement ever since, been instrumental to the GSA to have Councilmember Healy so involved. You also appointed Heidi Bauer as the city's representative to the Groundwater Sustainability Agency Advisory Committee, and Heidi has served since that time, and is now the Chair of the Advisory Committee, so another great addition from Petaluma. There have been many other actions, including the city has provided financial support for the GSA throughout the years, the first two years, the contribution was about $143,000, and then those contribution levels were renegotiated and are now a maximum of $25,000 from the city, starting in fiscal year 2019-20. So again, some financial support greatly appreciated. So what we're here to talk about tonight is the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, so creation of the agency was the first step that Sigma, as the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, requires. We formed those agencies, now the second step of Sigma, second requirement, is to develop a local groundwater sustainability plan for the basin. So we have been working, when I say we, technical staff, but the advisory committee and the board have been working since 2018 on the GSP, and we're now at the very end of that process. And so we just finished the public comment period, and we had a, I think, a really helpful meeting with Petaluma Valley, Petaluma city staff to discuss issues and concerns with the GSP. We held a community meeting, a board meeting for public comments, and then we'll be taking all of the comments that were received, considering them, incorporating them into the GSP as appropriate, and then issuing a final draft at the end of November, early December, and there'll be a public hearing on that on December 8th. And then we need to submit that to Department of Water Resources, and there'll be another 75-day public review period. So basically, what the Groundwater Sustainability Plan does is it defines what the basin conditions are, and if the basin is not in great shape, talks about how are we going to fix this. So the bottom line is that the groundwater basin is generally in really good shape in Petaluma Valley. And, but due to a lack of data, it's unclear how groundwater pumping affects streams, there's also a lack of data in the interaction with the San Pablo Bay, so that's another area where there are some data gaps. However, we do know that we need some projects as a hedge against future uncertainties, but the primary focus of implementation of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan is really on filling these data gaps. And so we're looking at some minor projects, which we'll talk, Jay will talk about in a little bit, and we're also looking at different policy options, which he'll also address, one of those could be metering of wells for larger, for commercial and industrial and agricultural wells, but we want to make it really clear, and we'll say this a couple of different times, is that the GSA cannot require meters for wells that are used basically for residential purposes. And finally, in terms of paying for all this, we'll be seeking grants and partnerships, but well owners will likely probably pay a fee, and that the fee and the fee itself and the amount of the fee are to be determined by a separate fee study, it's not part of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And so basically, the plans are designed to define basin conditions, or describe them, today and then 50 years into the future, so through 2070, to determine whether these conditions are considered sustainable, and if they're not sustainable, how can we fix them? And if they are sustainable, how can we keep them sustainable through 2042? So what groundwater sustainability plans are, is that they're required by the state, and they're locally developed, and they're very quantitative. What they are not are detailed analyses of specific projects and management actions, they're not subject to CEQA, and they're not detailed funding plans, so they're pretty high-level documents. And the Groundwater Sustainability Plan is basically, we have eight separate sections, each of those sections covers a specific topic. The most, probably the key sections are Section 3, which describes how the geology of the basin, and a computer water model that looks at groundwater coming into and going out of the basin, and whether or not that's in balance. And Section 4, which talks about what sustainability is locally, and that was determined with a lot of input from the advisory committee and the board. And then the projects and management actions are, it's also a really critical part of the GSP, and then finally, the implementation plan, which actually lays out, okay, how are we going to get all of this done? And what are the potential funding sources? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jay to talk about the findings.
Thank you, Anne, and good evening, council members, Jay Jasper, Sonoma Water. Here tonight is the Plan Manager for the Petaluma Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency, and I'm going to just give a high-level take-homes on some key points that the draft Groundwater Sustainability Plan contains, so it'll be pretty high-level. But I want to start with three slides here, starting with this one, and just, this will be a highlight of where the Groundwater Sustainability Plan is in terms of describing the conditions as we know them now, for this basin, for six sustainability indicators, which are required for Sigma. And those six sustainability indicators, the GSA has the authority to locally define sustainability around each of those six indicators, and that's provided in the plan, and so that's been a lot of the work that's been involved through the advisory committees, and staff, and the Groundwater Sustainability Board, in locally determining what we as a community view as sustainable, as long as it comports with existing data and uses industry standards and methods, scientific methods. And so I also want to just mention that this is an adaptive process, and so this plan that we're putting out now will be updated in five years as new data comes in, and so it's going to be an evolving effort here, as we get more information, we'll get more refined understanding of the groundwater conditions, and Sigma provides that we, if we're not in sustainable conditions now, we have until 20 years, the year 2042, to achieve sustainability, and as Anne mentioned, 50 years to maintain sustainability, and so that's all within the actual statute of the law. So that context, then, we'll go through very quickly where the plan sits on these six sustainability indicators, and these two show good news for Petaluma Basin. Groundwater quality is one of the indicators, and it's the data we have in the plan concludes that it's generally a good quality and acceptable groundwater quality. And a second indicator is land subsidence, in other words, you can't be pumping groundwater and drawing down the ground surface, we see evidence of this in the Central Valley. You probably have heard stories about the ground sinking due to over-pumping groundwater, there's no evidence of that occurring in this basin, so that's good news on those two of the indicators. Next slide, please. The next two I'll talk about are declining groundwater levels, the top one, and the storage of water in the aquifer. And here we think also pretty good news, but with a caveat that we don't have a lot of data in this basin. This basin compared to the other two plans has the least amount of studies that have been conducted, it got started later than the Sonoma Valley, where the first scientific studies on groundwater really began in 2001, 2002, and then there was in Sonoma Valley, it was a voluntary groundwater management plan, and lots of work has been done there in terms of data collection. Santa Rosa Plain got started around 2009 with significant studies, and they also had a voluntary groundwater management program before Sigma, so those two basins are a bit more well-characterized than Petaluma, and so that's the big caveat with this basin. It seems to be in the best condition overall in terms of sustainability, but the one area we need to work on is we need to increase the amount of monitoring, and we need to, we have data gaps, and so we need to invest in these data gaps. So with that, these two sustainability indicators, it looks like groundwater storage, based on the data we have, is relatively stable, and the groundwater levels are also pretty stable. Go back one slide, please. Yes, and the final two here are what we need more work on, because we have very limited information, and that is on the seawater intrusion, the potential for seawater intrusion due to groundwater pumping. We don't see any red flags right now, but we have to acknowledge that we have very little data also, and so this is going to be one of the things we work on in implementing the plan, as I'll mention in a little bit. And then the same with the data for the depletion of interconnected surface water, so groundwater pumping, drawing down surface water and streams, and this is a data gap that all of the basins, pretty much all of the Sigma basins across the state, struggle with this one in having sufficient data, and so it's certainly here too in Petaluma. All right, next slide. So Chapter 3, as Anne said, really is a pretty dense part of the report, a lot of technical information on geology and groundwater and water use, but it all culminates in a the information going and how a computer model has been developed that integrates climate, surface water, and groundwater, and we look over into the future, the years 2021 to 2070, and we look at what's called a water budget, and it's basically like a checking account over that period of time, and you have inputs and you have outputs, and you can see the major inputs here are in the blue arrows, and the outputs are in the red arrows, so you have water coming into the basin through infiltration or from streams. You also have just ground seepage, you know, and so, and then there's also subsurface from the upper watersheds, water coming into the basin, and then you have water that goes out of the basin through evapotranspiration or leakage from the groundwater to the streams, and it leaves the basin, or groundwater pumping. All this to say that really what we see so far, based on the data and what using our model, shows that this basin's in pretty good shape over this period of time, 2021 to 2070. It shows a slight, over that period of time, and slight average decline of storage, which is fairly negligible, of about 200 acre-feet per year, so pretty good shape based on the data we have. Next slide. So Section 6 in the report, as Anne said, talks about projects that are needed to support sustainability around those six sustainability indicators, or to enhance groundwater sustainability, and I'll add to increase drought resiliency too. The GSP doesn't look at the impacts of short-term droughts or emergencies like that, it's a long-term planning document, but these projects that are contained in the plan as recommended, there really aren't too many for this basin compared to the other two basins in the county, but we have put some of these in because it will enhance groundwater sustainability and give us a little buffer, and also help us more for the droughts, such as the one we're currently in, even though it's raining right now. So one of the projects is a voluntary water use efficiency, and alternative, you know, like groundwater projects for rural residents, commercial industrial users, and agriculture. City of Petaluma, of course, has a pretty long history, along with the rest of our water contractors on investing in water use efficiency and water conservation programs. The idea here is to, is to reach out and try to get some of those programs on a voluntary basis, and get grants to extend that water conservation implementation and financing or funding into outside of the city and into the rural communities to reduce groundwater pumping. Another project that is mentioned there really is just dovetailing on the city's recycled water system, and as that expands, just coordinating with the city on that, and helping the city in terms of trying, or demonstrating the benefit of a city's recycled water system on groundwater, and how can we can work together to support that, because the more recycled water is used, the less groundwater is used, and so there's definitely a synergy there that we want to capture. So those are a couple of the major programs we're looking at in this basin, next slide. Additional actions or projects that we're going to study at a higher level is aquifer storage and recovery, which is also known as groundwater banking, and this would consist of bringing in Russian River drinking water and putting it down wells to recharge the basin. So in the plan, the concept here is to participate with the other two basins in terms of looking at the potential for ASR in the longer term, should it be needed for drought relief, and just evaluate the concept here, there's actual projects that, in the other two basins, that are probably going to be moving forward for their plans. This one would be a step back and really just part of an overall regional study for aquifer storage and recovery. We're also looking at policy options, you know, for discretionary view of well permits, coordinating on farm plans with the agricultural community for on-farm recharge, and well metering for non-residential pumpers such as agriculture too, so we'll look at the policy options so that the GSA Board is informed on, you know, policy options they may have to decide on down the road, should they want to pursue any of those types of solutions or management actions. And then we also have stormwater capture, taking floodwaters and slowing down the runoff and allowing, from the ground surface, allowing groundwater to be recharged, this is different than aquifer storage, where you actually put it down at depth through wells, different flavor of recharge it to well. Next slide. So with those voluntary reductions and increased recycled water, we ran that through our model, and it showed that the water levels will increase, help limiting declines of groundwater levels during long droughts, so again, that drought resiliency, and the model predicts with these measures, with conservation and any kind of, you know, use of recycled waters, groundwater, will also provide more groundwater discharge into the surface water stream, so positive benefits the model's predicting by those activities. Next slide. Other tools that are available, and I touched on this earlier, is, but I didn't really say it explicitly, but the GSA, under Sigma, has authority to manage groundwater pumping, it has some regulatory authorities, and so this is looking at those policy options I mentioned, well metering for Well metering for commercial, industrial, and agricultural wells. Working with the county, the county retains the authority on well permitting. But Sigma encourages coordination with the Land Use Agency and the well permitting at the county. Looking at low-impact development and water-efficient landscape requirements. Working with the county and perhaps modifying the well ordinance. And then permitting in the county of water hauling is another thing that could be looked at too. So these are just some of the ideas we have. I mentioned that this basin in particular has some data gaps that we need to fill to bring us up over the next five years in terms of amounts and locations of groundwater pumping, you know, improving our database on that so we can better estimate it. Three-dimensional data gaps in the monitoring network. We have 11 primary wells that we're using. And we have plans, we have a grant to install another three multi-level groundwater wells that will be used to help us monitor for sustainability. We need to better understand faults and basin boundary characteristics. So we'll do some studies there. And as I mentioned, interconnection of streams and effect of groundwater pumping, which is really all the basins. And then the big one is the last one there in this basin and also in Sonoma, is the distribution and extent of brackish groundwater in San Pablo Basin there. We really need to beef up our monitoring and understanding the impacts. And especially over that 50-year horizon with sea level rise too. So that's what we're looking at for data gaps. The implementation plan, Section Seven of the report has in it, in addition to how these programs and management actions are going to be implemented, it has an estimated cost for the first five years. And the average annual cost for this one is about $1.1 million per year. You can see the major components here. There are a lot of things that are just required by Sigma in terms of having a groundwater sustainability agency and operating it. But then there's other activities and I'll draw your attention to the data gaps and model updates. Again, that's a bigger slice of the pie for this basin, 40%. Projects and planning design are 6%. So some of the other basins, Sonoma and Santa Rosa Plain, those numbers are different and have a more heavily weighted towards the projects instead. But that gives you a rough idea of the first five years of implementing and the cost for that. Next slide. So funding, as Ann says, is going to come from a variety of sources. Obviously, first and foremost priority is to pursue state and federal grants. We've received several significant grants for this basin, well over $2 million. And we'll continue to be very active in that. The state just announced, they're going to be releasing in 2022, Sigma implementation grants to help GSAs like Petaluma fund some of the implementation costs. We're also looking at partnering with local and regional state and federal partners on projects and activities where we can. And then also potential fee sources. All of the three groundwater sustainability agencies, including Petaluma, are initiating a fee study. So as this plan gets submitted in January, we have just started the fee study, which will then dovetail the groundwater sustainability plan. It's going to focus on groundwater users who directly benefit from a specific project, beneficiaries of a healthier groundwater system, and groundwater users who build new wells. Those are three areas where the fee study will focus. Next slide. So how GSP implementation could, you know, affect stakeholders here in the Petaluma Valley? You know, the long run, the long term is that it's going to provide a secure and reliable source of water now and into future generations. And so it's a limited resource. So managing it proactively now and continuing to manage it is critical. You know, one of the things I've mentioned a few times is we want to really keep our eye on preventing seawater intrusion in this basin. So that's one we've really got our eye on as we move into implementation. And, you know, there is potential that farmers or businesses might someday be metered. But rural residents, as Ann pointed out, and I'll just emphasize here again, cannot be required to install meters. They may choose to install meters, but the Groundwater Sustainability Agency cannot require rural residential users of groundwater to install a meter if they use it for domestic purposes and their use is less than 1,785 gallons per day. That's in the actual statute. And then groundwater beneficiaries might pay a fee to help cover the costs of implementing the groundwater sustainability plan. And, you know, the, the type of the fee and the amount, as I mentioned, is a separate study. It's not part of the plan itself. And just to emphasize that, you know, Sigma is not discretionary. If, if the Groundwater Sustainability Agency does not manage to sustainable conditions and meet the state's requirements, the state has the authority to come in and take over management of the basin. And then that will be from Sacramento instead of here locally through the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And that concludes our slides. And Ann and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I will kick off one of the questions on Slide 16. You were talking, you were referencing data that still needs to be gathered. And one of them was the amounts and location of groundwater pumping. Can you give us an idea about how, what percentage do you do know at this point?
So the way, if you break, just in general, if you break down the groundwater use and pumping, there's kind of three basic categories. There's the municipal pumping, which is in this basin is, is the city of Petaluma. We have very good records because the city of Petaluma measures their pumping. So we have really good records there. Then we also have agriculture and then rural residential. There's no required metering for either of those categories of users in general. And that is where, here in Petaluma, but also in, you know, all of the basins, what we have to do is we have to estimate the use. And so for agriculture, we use a land use base. It's called land use base method. So if we have X number of acres of vineyards, just as an example. So the size, the amount of acres and the type of crop, we can use algorithms for that type of crop with our, then our computer model has the climate and locally here and the soil conditions. And it can account for what that use is. And it, what it does is we project a certain climate into the future and it estimates that. So it's, it's really land use space and then using these algorithms for, for use for agriculture. Rural residential, what we do again is we basically count the number of rural residential well users. And this one's a little fuzzier because there aren't as many studies and there's quite a wide variety of sizes of rural residential. We use the best studies we have and we're, and we then basically add all of that up. And then we use the climate also in the model then to modulate that average number. So some years it might be higher, some years lower, you know, if it's dry or wet. This is an area in particular, both the agriculture and the rural residential, where we're going to do other studies, additional studies to really hone in that estimate. And it's not just here in Petaluma, but it's also in the other basins.
So is there, is there any effort being made to actually move to metering so that it's less of an estimation or it's a more refined and precise estimate?
That, that would only be possible for the agricultural or commercial in the rural areas. Because, you know, as we stated, we, the GSA cannot require the rural residential component to meter. What we might look at, and so the GSA could, if they choose, require metering for agriculture and commercial in the rural areas and industrial. That's one of the things we're going to look at, the policies on how the GSA board might do that should they choose to. But this plan is not, this plan is not proposing to actually do that. It's proposing to look at how it might be done so the board can determine if they want to go that route down the road. The rural residential, we're looking at some studies here because we can't have everybody meter. There might be some folks who will volunteer and maybe we can get actual metering for a sampling of them and extrapolate that out is probably the best way we can get better numbers on there. The thing is, when you go to metering, you have to get everybody, you know, for agriculture, you have to get everybody metered. If you just have 10% or 11%, whatever, it's, it's, you have to, you really have to have everybody participate in it to really get those solid numbers.
Yeah, a good idea.
It's an investment.
Yes, thank you. I think we have a question from Councilmember Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along those lines, you said that we really don't know the effect of groundwater pumping on our stream flows? And what kind of data would you collect to understand that?
That's, yeah, that's a good question. What we need to do, and we have plans to put these wells in, we need shallow wells along some of the key streams. And so we have plans to install, we've already installed some just recently, but we need to install more shallow wells and then measure the flow or the, or the stage in the stream next to the well so we can see the groundwater levels, understand what the pumping is nearby and the stream levels. And then what we also need to do is we really need to then understand, this is not enough just to say, okay, are we, we're pumping here and it's affecting the stream, but is it, is it impacting the ecosystem? Because that's what we're really after is groundwater-dependent ecosystems. So there's a biological ecological component here that we have to bring in. So we have a work group of experts and from resource agencies and practitioners who are advising us on how we can refine that over the next five years and develop a much more data-rich process. We, we have a proposal we've put in that acknowledges our deficiencies, but we think it's a good first step. And then we've tied that to a data collection and study program so that we know what we proposed here in this first version of the plan will be significantly different. And we'll have a much more robust approach to this after five years of doing some of these studies.
Good, thank you so much.
Thank you. I, okay, I see Vice Mayor Barnacle has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was wondering if you're looking at, I know the county, they were looking at a cannabis ordinance earlier this year that got delayed in part because of the unknown impacts of water. And I'm wondering how your efforts, looking at the potential impact of cannabis cultivation in the county.
Yeah, that's a good question. We did look at it. You know, when we, we had certain practitioner work groups. And I mentioned one for the impacts of surface water on streams. We had another one that looked at experts and practitioners on projecting what the future 50-year of agriculture will be. And we broke it down crop by crop, you know, orchards or low crops or vineyards, et cetera. And we looked at cannabis too. We worked with the Ag Commissioner also and permit Sonoma and others in addition to practitioners. What we found with cannabis is that the current use, especially for groundwater, but just the current use, it's, even though there's, it's in the news a lot and there's a lot of policy discussion on it, right now, based on the data we have, it's a pretty really small component of the overall picture. So compared to the rest of agriculture. So the way we're handling that is we've acknowledged that and we presented the data we have based on all of the permits and the estimated water use. But then we're going to be looking at this, you know, every year. And with our five-year update, if we see, you know, a huge expansion, then we'll include that into our estimates at that time too. So we're going to update that. But it just was in the scheme of things right now, it just, it wasn't as significant compared to the other water use for agriculture.
Great, thanks, appreciate that. And then you talked about the, the areas where you needed more data and more monitoring. And then maybe I missed it in the cost. Do you, is the, the data that you need, is it, do you have that costed out? Do you have sources of funding coming for that? And any sense of the timeline of when those would, you know, you'd start to have the data that you desire?
Yeah, so the, if you see on this pie chart here, you'll see the filling data gaps and model updates 40%. So 40% of that average cost of 1.1 million per year is focused on that. And then I'll just draw your attention to the lower right corner there, annual monitoring and reporting. So in terms of the data collection, we, there's two, two types. There's, there's doing studies. And then the other is putting in monitoring devices like wells or stream gauges and then collecting the data, you know, continuously over time. And so those two, 40 plus 17% is about 57% of the entire cost are involved with putting in monitoring systems, collecting that data and doing the studies that are needed in the updates. So it leans, this is the first five years. So it leans pretty heavy in this basin on really bringing up the level of, to the requirements that the state is going to require. The state understands that some basins don't have enough data at the get-go. But as long, that's okay, as long as you acknowledge it. And as long as you have a plan to get up to that level to meet the standards in their emergency regulations. And so that's what we've done here in this report.
Great, appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your report, Ann and Jay. We really appreciate it. And now we're going to go on to the rest of our meeting. So thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move on to general public comment. And I will ask our city clerk to see if she's received any general public comments.
Madam Mayor, no general public comments prior to the meeting.
Thank you. And I will ask our moderator, Patrick Carter, to see if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak to items that are not on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to start this 30-second timer at the end of which we'll tally up how many hands are raised and divide that either into three minutes or two minutes, depending on if there's six or more hands raised. So starting that timer now. General public comment is for items that are not on the current agenda, so not being acted upon by the council at tonight's meeting. Please raise your hand in Zoom or press star nine if you're participating by phone to raise your hand. Attendees will be muted when their time expires or when their comments have concluded, whichever comes first. Speakers are encouraged to be respectful. If that's a violence or insanity, our grounds are removal from the meeting. And if you're unable to speak at the end of this, I'm allotted, please send your comments to cityclerk@cityofpetaluma.org. We have seven hands raised, the last of which is M. Sullivan. So let me reset my timer to two minutes. And I will allow our first speaker, John Hanania, followed by Paul G., to speak. John, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Well, it should be three minutes because seven times three is 21. Anyway, I've been saying all alone about the way you guys operate, but you don't like my approach. But here we go again. When Petaluma Police Department arrested off-duty police officer, they blasted it all over the news. His name, the agency that he worked for, and everything. Anytime they make an arrest, it's all over the media. But yeah, when one of them screw up, they're in the height of George Floyd and hit black woman, it's all hush, hush, as I've been saying all alone. Hush, hush, make it go away. And when I asked about it to the deputy chief, he lies to my face. Your city attorney lies to me. Well, here's something else for community to understand. Part of the problem is Teresa Barrett and Mike Healy. Because when I filed a complaint about him and he did something wrong and the chief of police changed the outcome by saying, here's my finding, not the finding of the investigating agency. Did Mike Healy respond? Did Teresa Barrett respond? Hell, no. So they are to blame for the bad behavior. Also, you need to So they are to blame for the bad behavior. Also, you need to hold the staff accountable. Also, Dennis Pusake, I talked to you about the, the checkmark that Ken Savano did. You said you're going to be participating in ad hoc meetings. And if they don't bring it up, you're going to participate and speak up. I never heard you once, not once in any of those meetings. What happened? Say what you mean, mean what you say. So when I say you guys hypocrites, there it is. The glove fit perfect.
Thank you for your comments, John. Next speaker is Paul G. Paul, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Yes, I'm good at math too. Seven times three is 21. You should have all three minutes to all these people. This is terrible that you do this to us week after week. Okay? You should give us all the time we need. Mayor Brad and Honorable City Council Members, thank you for the time to speak. I test affirm the following statements are true accurate within my personal knowledge. I sent you an email today. Please listen to my October 7, October 27 addresses regarding Petaluma's existing wireless ordinance. I have good news, bad news, and game-changing news, but not time enough to do it all. First, the good news, as we prevailed of California legislation in 2021, we worked full-time from April through October and we got a veto of SB 556. The governor wrote the provisions of SB 556 conflict with and complicate SEC requirements. So it'd be imprudent to codify these requirements in state law. There's a rule for local governments in advancing California's broadband. Local governments can take an active role in the last mile broadband deployment, end quote. We returned local control to you, the city of Petaluma. Do not fumble it. If you're listening to Eric Danley, you're in the process of fumbling it. Governor Newsom is addressing this to you, city council members. This means there's little need to update Petaluma's current wireless ordinance. The city can leave its wireless ordinance largely as it is. Now, some bad news, Governor Newsom signed into law three bills, AB 537, 955, and AB 378, SB 378. Well, what's going to happen to those? We're going to repeal them in 2022, along with AB 57. Finally, here's the game-changing news, the wireless world have revocably changed on Friday the 13th of August 2021 because there was a big lawsuit. Hey, Stanley told you about this? It's case 20-1025 Environmental Health Trust and Children's Health Defense at All versus the FCC. Would love to tell you more about it in my 18 seconds. We grant the petitions in part and remand to the commission. The commission failed to provide a reasoned explanation for its determination that its guidelines and radiation adequately protect against harmful effects of exposure. That's what you have to do, is you have to stop operating antennas that are above 6,000 megahertz. I gave you the details in the email.
Thank you for your comments, Paul. Next speaker is Laura Mendelson, followed by Bev at Protect Wild Petaluma. Lauren, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Good evening. Thank you, dear honorable council members, city staff, and everyone listening today. My name is Lauren Mendelson. I'm an attorney at the Law Offices of Omar Figueroa. I represent a commercial tenant in the city of Petaluma. And I am here today encouraging you to move forward with amending the city code to allow for the existence of storefront cannabis retail facilities statewide. There are only around 823 licensed brick and mortar cannabis dispensaries to serve a population of almost 40 million people. California has only two licensed cannabis dispensaries for every 100,000 people, which is one of the lowest rates in the nation among states that have legalized cannabis. In comparison, Alaska has over 20 dispensaries per 100,000 people. Oregon has almost 18 per 100,000 residents. Colorado has over 14 per 100,000 and California is only at two. So Petaluma can help solve this problem by allowing storefront dispensaries there. There, in, because of this, there's roughly 3,000 unlicensed dispensaries and delivery services that are filling in this gap by the lack of the licensed outlets. And these licensed, unlicensed businesses are not paying taxes. And the products that they sell are not subject to the same quality and safety standards. Creating more opportunities for licensed dispensaries to exist will help to address this. It'll also help create jobs in the community and serve the demand coming from residents and visitors. As a quick side note, I heard the city of Napa is moving forward with allowing adult-use dispensaries in the city and they already allow medical storefront dispensaries. I propose some language based on other city ordinances that would create a pathway to permit brick and mortar dispensaries as well as some language for a tax ordinance so the city can benefit and use that revenue to serve other city purposes. I encourage the city to move forward with looking at this issue as quickly as possible so that dispensaries might be able to open their doors in Petaluma in 2022. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Lauren. Next speaker is Bev at Protect Wild Petaluma, followed by Taryn Obaid. Bev, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Thank you for listening. It is human nature to make decisions based on our previous experience. And this used to work well, but in a changing world, tendency which may have served us well can turn out to be disastrous. In our current situation, we cannot afford to destroy the systems that provide important services to mitigate the damage we have already done, which has caused us to be in a climate emergency. This reminds me of when I was a kid, my brother was a toddler, this was before seatbelts. And he would sit in the front of the car on the floor at my mother's feet. And one day, as we were on a long drive, the heater dropped out of the, of the car because he had unscrewed all the bolts that were holding it in. We are kind of in that position. It didn't take much for him to do that and he didn't need to put it back. And he certainly couldn't have put it back. And we are in the position of pulling the bolts out of the wings of our airplane, waiting to see what will happen. How many bolts do we really need to keep aloft? If we take out 10 bolts, will anything happen? If we take out 100 bolts, will anything happen? Are we waiting for the plane to crash to understand how many bolts it takes? And, you know, I'm talking about other things like our wildlife, our trees, our river, our earth. So I just urge you to remember that we need to have respect for all these systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Bev. Next speaker is Taryn Obaid, followed by Sue. Taryn, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Thanks, Patrick. Good evening. I heard last week from a neighbor that there's a new minor wireless telecom facility proposed for four blocks away from my home. I was surprised and I didn't believe it was true. How could it be? How could it be because the city planning department had promised all of us citizens to so effectively help the city and oppose the Creamery Verizon Tower? The city promised us that they would tell us and keep us informed if another tower came to our town, but they haven't. We're highly concerned about this and we're very unhappy about this. We're very engaged, we're very knowledgeable, we're very informed and we're very much in the spirit of helping the city. But we're, again, continue to be shut out. It's beyond unfortunate to us and it's been over eight months. We don't have a new ordinance, so this new application comes in without the added protections. I'm here tonight to respectfully, respectfully ask two things. One, tonight, please, can you tell us what this is? What is this application? What are the specifications? Because it's not on the city website and nobody has answered any of our emails or phone calls. And number two, can you please consider beefing up the considerations of the health impacts per the recent DC Court, Circuit Court order to the FCC that they must now address health impacts of wireless radiation? Our very own local nonprofit, FACS, has taken a national leadership role in having the government enforce health effects. And they asked me tonight to ask you to please look in your inbox because they invited you to a webinar to learn about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Taryn. Next speaker is Sue, followed by M. Sullivan, who will be our last speaker. Sue, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council and city staff. I'm speaking tonight about our unhoused neighbors that are out at Steamer Landing and the temporary restraining order. The Press Democrat had an article today that said all of the involved parties were required to submit a joint status report about any agreements that may have been reached at the next hearing, which is this Thursday. So I'm wondering if anyone can comment on that. Some of the folks out there prefer living outside in their tent home and are asking for a place to do that. Some are able and willing to pay some amount to, to do that, even $5 or $10, which would be on the level of like a national park pass and which then could go towards some services. And I'm thinking rather than a sanctioned camp, is there a way that we can set up something on the lines of a state campground with basic services of bathroom showers, trash, drinking water? There could be a campground host with rules just as there are for state and national parks. I know that the end goal is to have people housed. And until the housing is built, even the transitional tiny homes, it seems like we need to find a place for people to camp where they won't get moved. So just keep plugging along. I know we're all trying to work on getting people taken care of and I think your efforts, I thank you very much for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Our next speaker is M. Sullivan. M. Sullivan, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Yes, good evening. I'd like to address this idea of our being climate-ready. We're built out almost tenfold our state-required RIN numbers for moderate and luxury housing this round. Our carbon footprint of modern construction is huge. It's responsible for 40% of all carbon emissions. The sun-sustainable pace of development is both not necessary and it does not at all comport with our climate change goals. The problem is that rather than our own in-house planning staff, we have consultants. These consultants are incentivized to maximize their development work. It both provides a clear metric to go way overboard as we see. And rather than strengthen ordinances, which the M-group consultants don't get paid for, the focus is indeed always on develop, 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 and hence our tenfold build-out. At this rate of development, all that's left to do is to sprawl outside our urban growth boundary and gobble up more land. Other cities in Sonoma County are not doing this. I think it's time that we had some hard conversations about our shared values. A lot of our critical, our critical values are not being prioritized. Safe biking, protection of natural systems, flood protection, sustainability, and VMT. We pay lip service to VMT, but then we approve the David and single-family homes on our town's periphery. We talk about transit-oriented development, but then all of three tenths of a mile down from our transit station, we approve 330 off-street parking spaces and yet more single-family homes. I want you to know that the public sees this duplicity. And so I would like us at the very least to not exceed our RIN numbers in this next general plan. And ideally, I would like to see us terminate the M-group contract and return to our own in-house planning staff. It's time for our town to be in the driver's seat. Thank you.
All right. And that was the last hand that was raised by the end of the 30-second timer at the beginning. As I announced, M. Sullivan was the last speaker. If anybody else has their hand up, please feel free to send your comments to cityclerk@cityofpedaluma.org and they'll be placed on the website. With that, I will turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Patrick. And with that, we'll close general public comment. And I will bring it back to the council for council comment. And I'm going to start with Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you very much. So my committee liaisons and appointments. I have a pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee this week and I'm hoping members of the public will come. It's got a good agenda. The wayfinding, so you can get your way around down and so we can, will be showcased on this week's agenda. The other main activity I've been involved with is the continuum of care for homelessness countywide. And at their meeting on October 27, there was a significant discussion of Home Key, much as the council has discussed this a number of times. But at the Board of Supervisors meeting, the county put an additional $1 million into the service side of Home Key. So the state will put up the residence, the structures, but the services necessary are limited in funding. So county put up money, then the Continuum of Care Board put up another $1 million, which pushes the amount of care out to estimated for Sonoma County of seven years of care service over what the state had originally had in it, three years of service. So the county is really doing their work to help people, not just with the housing, but all the wraparound services that go with that. And that, that was the key decisions from that meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Healy.
Thank you. So I walked down to my office, so I seem to be able to participate now. I have three liaison reports, Petaluma Valley Water Sustainability Agency, Water Supply Coordination Council, and the WAC. So it's a water-heavy, water-heavy two weeks. You just pretty much got the PVGSA update. I would just say that we're, we're going to need to have, and I've talked to Steph about this. I'm going to ask to have a discussion and direction regarding rate raising alternatives, probably in January, because that comes in after the plan. People who've been following this longer than some will recall that when Petaluma decided to join the unincorporated areas for a single GSA for the Petaluma Valley, our former staffer, Leah Walker, was able to negotiate a governance structure that's a little bit unusual. So the PVGSA board has what I would call the United Nations Security Council Governance Model for rate-setting matters, which means that Supervisor Rabbit, on behalf of the county and I, on behalf of the city, each have vetoes, even if things otherwise have majority support. And based on the conversation at the last GSA meeting, that, that may come into play in terms of how the money to fund this $1.1 million a year gets raised. And the frustrating thing to me is that none of that $1.1 million really is for projects to do anything to improve the groundwater situation in, in the South County. It's all just wells and monitor, monitoring and reports and, and, you know, report writing, things like that. It's, so it would, it would be easier to swallow for, for real, real substantive things that actually we're going to make an improvement on the ground, but none of that is. And then with the Water Supply Coordination Council and the WAC, which kind of overlap, the, there was some discussion of the current status of Potter Valley, which is currently in this, the throes of this relicensing issue with PG&E, even though the lake above Potter Valley is in very good shape now after the last storm, very little water is coming through the, the Potter Valley project because the transformer is down and they can't generate electricity. So Lake Mansino is, is getting very little relief through, through Potter Valley at this point. And then people always ask what, what the effect of the last storm was. And on the theory that a picture is worth a thousand words, I asked Kendall to put up graphic that can talk about that. Kendall, if you would do that, please. So this is a little bit complicated, but I can walk folks through it. So the water year is, is October 1 through September 30. So you can see the last water year that ended a month ago tailing off at the lower right-hand corner. And then the new water year picking up again is the dark black line on, on lower left. And the storm that we experienced eight days ago is that little upward blip on the black line, which was great news and increased our storage from 105,000 acre feet in Lake Sonoma to 120,000 acre feet, which is a big jump. But if you look at the last several years, you can see that we're way below the average for, for, for the region for the last seven, seven years or so. And what's interesting, the dotted line at the top of this where it goes from blue to white, that's the top of the water supply pool. And the, the, the capacity within the dam, behind the dam, above that 245,000 acre feet is what's called the flood control pool. And traditionally, the Corps of Engineers has drawn down water that gets in there very aggressively. As you can see from those rapid drawdowns when it's happened in the past, to preserve capacity for, for, for an incoming storm to preserve, you know, flood, flood, I'm sorry, flood control for the Gurnville area. There's a bit of a change on that now. It, it hasn't been, but you don't see it in this data because it hasn't happened within the last year or so. But the, the Water Agency has, is, is now adopted and gotten the court to adopt something called FERO, which is Forecast Informed Reservoir Operations, which means they will leave that excess water above 245,000 acre feet inside the dam and not just send it down to the and not just send it down to the ocean unless they see another major storm coming in. So we hope to be able to preserve those, those, that water for, for, for the dry season in the future, better than we've done in the past. But the, the big picture here really is that black line in the lower left to show you, yes, it was 15,000 additional acre feet, but we're still half of where we would like to be. So Kendall, thank you for putting that up, and I'm done.
And, and I think that was a really good graphic to show that just as everybody feels it's a big jump up, but it's a jump up from a very low place. So thank you for sharing that with us. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I concur with that, with your comment. Thanks for showing that graphic to me, really. So I have two, two meetings to report out on. At the Music Parks and Recreation Meeting, we had three items and a pretty content-rich discussion on all three. We talked about the Scott Ranch Project and the revised park amenities and things like that. Lot of concern around the habitat and the trail locations and things like that. We also discussed the existing conditions report for the general plan and gave a lot of good feedback on that to, to staff. And then the, the third item was the Westridge Trail, and we're going to be moving forward, it sounds like, with repaving one of the, one of the sides of the Westridge Trail first, and then potentially expanding to do both, but starting with one. The second meeting was the Agon Open Space Community Advisory Committee, and saw a couple of really great projects that I can't for the life of me find the names of. But it was something like 1,800 acres of land. Some of it up, an old golf course in the WikiUp area is going to be put into an outdoor education and systems education for the nearby community. Couple of others. And then they gave an update on their vegetation management program. And really impressed that they were able to get out like over 50 grants and $4 million to different land donors around the county in such a short amount of time and put in systems and processes to, to really have a strong learning management element to it. So really great work that's going on at the Agon Open Space Body. And that is it.
Thank you. Councilmember King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did not have any of my committees meet in the last couple of weeks. My only comment really, and I think that the city manager is either going to comment on this evening or if she can in two weeks, about the situation on East Court and Lindbergh Lane during the pendency of the storm and what options we have as a city to, to address that, to prevent that type of thing from happening in the future. So if you're prepared tonight, great. If not, maybe in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did have a planning commission meeting last week. We had a presentation by Relief Pedaluma. And we also commented on the existing conditions reports, particularly for land use, transportation, and parks and rec. So that's the only thing I have to report there, but I am pleased to report that we won the Cool City Challenge. As you know, thank you. Been working on that over the entire summer. I want to thank my councilman, fellow councilmember Postake for joining me on that steering committee team. And also for planning, for Patrick Carter of the City Manager's Office for joining us as well. I've just had three days of training with our core team. And we won the challenge along with the City of Los Angeles and the City of Irvine. So we've been training with those two cities, really interesting to learn from their practices and what they're doing. And really proud to be sort of on the front of this issue. And as you know, this grant is to get us to our carbon neutrality goal by 2030, starting with Cool Block Leaders, which will start in January. Any more information if you need? We now have a website called coolpedaluma.com, no, dot org, sorry, coolpedaluma.org, where we're trying to populate it with all the information you might need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Postake.
I'd like to congratulate and thank Delinda for leading that effort on the Cool City Challenge. I had one meeting of the Youth Commission, and we, we came to a conclusion that the projects for this semester would include work with some environmental organizations to, I believe, include for sure the Pedaluma Wetlands Alliance and Daily Axe, and perhaps another one or two. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a meeting with the Pedaluma Library Advisory Board, and I, I think I've been reporting for quite a while, at least it feels that way to me, about the efforts that are going on to remodel, which is called Refresh, our library. And it was really hampered by the, the shutdown of the, that the pandemic caused. And so that is, which is unfortunate, because no one could go to the library. So it was the perfect time to have gotten it done, had it been able to happen. But that did not occur. So we are now looking at probably a six-month closing of the library. It could be as much as nine. And, but the city has been a terrific partner with the library. And the library is going to be able to use part of the Kennelworth Teen Center for helping getting books to and from people and other events that the library is so good at putting on. So it will be a lot of developing the programs as they are from afar, but I'm sure they will be doing it in a super good job. The other thing that is happening at the library is usually we have one youth member on the library advisory board with our new regional branch manager, Diana Spalding. She's suggested we have two, which I think is a great idea. And she's also suggested that it be a two-year commitment on the top part of the team. So we're looking for someone who is perhaps younger. Usually we get seniors. So I think it's a great idea to get the word out amongst students that this is a really good position for kids to be in, because a lot of things happen in our community through the library. And the library during non-COVID times gets over 1,000 visitors a day in Pedaluma. It's the most visited library in the Sonoma County. But there's a lot of events that the library does and has been doing virtually. So there's a lot of opportunities for our teens to get involved and be leaders there. So I also hope that members of the Youth Commission might want to look at that. Or if they don't, if they're not interested in it, at least publicize it in their schools. In addition to that, I was able to participate in the annual Sonoma County Mayor's Committee on working businesses, working with and hiring disabled persons in our community. And it's usually an annual breakfast, and it just didn't even happen last year. But this year it did happen, and we were able to honor the Saks Hostess Group at Saks over on Liberty Street. And so I was happy to be part of that and honor the work that they do in, in opening up and being more inclusive in our community. So I did, was able to visit some of the residents on East Court with our city manager, but I believe she's going to respond to that, so I will let her take the lead on that. But, you know, we didn't have flooding throughout the Peyran area this year. And I think it's really important to realize that things were bad on East Court, and we do really want to look at what happened there. And, you know, but we also have to realize that because of the forward-thinking of our community in investing in that long-term investment at the Peyran flood fix and, and continuing to monitor development in the flood plain and make sure that we do not do anything that exacerbates our flood fixes. I think it's really an important thing, because when something like this happens, it brings you right back to the true devastation of having floodwater in your house and the vulnerability of people in wheelchairs who don't have access, you know, can't get out and need the assistance of the city as well as their neighbors. So, you know, we have been very good in our community in responding to this in the past, and we need to continue that as we go forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to our city manager for city manager comment.
Thank you, Mayor. And so in response to Councilmember King's question, and, and just to build off of what you said, the city is currently assessing our preparation prior, response during the event, damages resulting from the event, and how city facilities and staff perform during the event, both to communities' requests for assistance and our response to those requests. As we are expediting that analysis, we will be presenting what we know, what we learned, what worked, what didn't at council's next meeting on November 15th. And just in the meantime, members of our community can submit information regarding the event and its impact, impacts on the community, including ongoing needs they may have to Erica Leah. It's E as in Erica, E L E A H A at cityofpedaluma.org. Again, E L E A H A at cityofpedaluma.org, or call 707-776-3780. Thank you. And that concludes my report out. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And with that, we are going to go to approval of the minutes for October 18. And do I see anyone with comments on that? No, I do not. So the minutes will stand approved as submitted. And then we go to the approval of the proposed agenda for November 15. And at this point, I would like to poll the council to see if council members would be available at 5 o'clock on that day to see, to do a closed session, since we were unable to do our closed session today on our city attorney evaluation. If anybody can't do that, could you just raise your hand? Okay, so if we could add that to that November 15 agenda, I would like a motion on that. I see Councilmember Fisher.
I'll move approval of that.
Thank you. And Councilmember McDonald.
Second on that.
Okay, thank you. We'll have a roll call vote by our city clerk.
Barrett.
Yes.
Barnacle.
Yeah.
Fisher.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Postake.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we're on to the consent calendar. And I have had a request to pull item 3F. And so I will make that a request. I'll ask to pull that item. Does anybody else on the, Councilmember Healy?
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to ask to remove 3C, so I can vote no.
3C and 3F, okay. So, okay, so with the other items, we have a comment on item 3D and 3E by our city attorney, not city attorney, I'm sorry, our assistant city manager before. So would you like to make that at this time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, that would be great. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Just wanted to make a brief oral report on items 3D and 3E per Government Code Section 54953(c)(3) before the council goes ahead and acts on any new compensation or benefits for your appointees, your appointed employees. We do need to make a brief oral report, so I wanted to go through that quickly with you. So item 3D is an amendment to the contract for your city manager, Peggy Flynn. There are several adjustments to be made there. So the salary will be changing from 210,000 to 240,000 annually. In addition, there will be an additional 6% contribution to a 457 retirement plan, 457 deferred compensation plan. There will also be an adjustment to the city manager's vacation accrual rate from 80 hours annually to 120 hours annually in recognition of her 20-plus years of prior public service. The agreement also allows a vacation sellback provision of up to 40 hours of vacation, which is consistent with the other management employees for the City of Pedaluma. And then finally, there is various miscellaneous cleanup provisions to the benefits in that agreement, such as the holidays that are being recognized in the agreement, as well as the medical contributions that the city provides to its employees. And then similarly, for item 3E, our adjustments to the city clerk's compensation agreement, that, that would include a 2% cost of living adjustment with a salary that is being adjusted to $135,150. And then again, the same benefit cleanups that the city manager's agreement is being impacted with, such as the holiday cleanup, et cetera. So those are the summaries for items 3D and 3E, and we are happy to answer additional questions, or the council may continue with its consent calendar as planned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Healy, you still have your hand up? Did you want to comment on this or no?
No, sorry.
Okay, so fine. So what I would like to do then is see if there's any public comment on items 3A, B, D, E, G, H, and I, not items 3C and not item 3F. And if so, if anybody has any comments from the public, I'd like to first check with our city clerk to see if she's received any comments.
Madam Mayor, no comments on those items.
Thank you. And so I'd like to ask our moderator to see if there's anybody in attendance who would like to speak to any of those items on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the public wishing to speak on these items, please raise your hand. I see hands raised, so I will share my screen. You'll have three minutes in which to give your comments. First speaker is Micah Alcalbassos, followed by Janice Kater Thompson. Micah, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Michaela Alcasabes. I'm a project associate for Mid Penn Housing. We're a nonprofit affordable housing provider here in the North Bay. In the affordable housing industry, one of the greatest challenges we face is pulling together the funding. For instance, with our 100% affordable development at 414 Pedaluma Boulevard North, we successfully competed for and secured state and federal funding only after we were awarded affordable housing funds from the City of Pedaluma. It was what made us competitive for those state and federal resources. We are happy to share that we will be breaking ground on 44 new apartments in April next year. The city manager and the housing staff are dedicated to greater housing affordability and are showing foresight in establishing a local housing trust fund. This trust fund will ensure not only that the funding can be available to support future affordable housing, but that the city's investment can be leveraged through state grants. This local housing trust fund will provide funding for various needed activities, such as land acquisition, homeless housing services, and gap financing loans to create affordable homes for Pedaluma residents, and we're very excited to support.
Thank you. Excuse me, this is the mayor. Which, which item are you responding to?
I'm responding to item 3A, the local housing trust fund.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry that I didn't understand that, and I'm sorry for interrupting you. But if you're in the future, please identify which item you're referring to.
Will do. Thank you. I'm done.
Sorry for the interruption. Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you for those comments. And next speaker is Janice Kater Thompson, followed by Paul G. Janice, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, yeah, on this item, I'd just like to see more transparency if we're going to continue with the Zoom meetings. I'd like to know.
Janice, we're not speaking on item three C yet.
Okay.
That's been pulled by Councilmember Healy. So these are for items three A, B, D, E, G, H, and I. So we will have three C following this. Okay, I'll the next person, please.
Next speaker is Paul G., followed by nobody currently. Paul, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Hi, thank you for my three minutes. I can do it a little bit more respectfully and easily with three minutes. So I want to talk about my experience with city manager Flynn. And it's important, if you're going to give significant city resources to her, to say you're doing a good job and continue on in the current direction, I'm going to suggest that you make that conditional on her actually engaging with the public in a respectful manner, which I have not experienced at all. I have actually reached out to her, I'm going to guess fifty times, five zero. I have the, it's in your public record. You can understand the number of emails I sent her directly, the number of voicemail messages I left for her, and how many times she has responded. It is probably in the range of one to two percent by email only. Never a meeting, never a phone call. This is completely unnecessary and very disrespectful of the public. In matters where have been parts of your public are subject matter experts and have valuable things to contribute to the policies of the city, it is important to make time and space to sit down and understand what it is it would take to represent the interests of the residents. And who would you listen to? Not just developers, not just people who, you know, have a complaint or two. How about people who actually put subject matter expertise right in your public record? And that I have done a lot, and I will continue to do so. And what happens? It gets in the public record and thuds and goes nowhere. And no discussion happens as a result. These things are to be discussed. These things are to make sure that you have a very good understanding of what these points all mean. And when you do, maybe we'll get some accountability over the stonewalling that occurs liberally and often under the Flynn's regime. She has no control over the the M group who never returns phone calls and doesn't actually provide information in timely manner. We have lots of of evidence of this, but there's no action taken to improve things. So my strong suggestion is you say, hey, if we're gonna give you thirty thousand dollar extra cash and maybe another extra ten thousand dollars in retirement benefit, oh, and some more vacation time, that you say, you know what? That's enough pay to return somebody's phone call. That would be a good thing to do. And I would like you to give her that direction right now, right after my comment. So we can clearly understand that this should be a government, other people, by the people, for the people, not just people we kind of like, or or somebody that we kind of want to talk to, or anything else like that, which happens a lot. What I think you should do is actually base it on the actual evidence that everyone brings forward and discuss the evidence. That's what's important to do when you make big decisions in the city. So I appreciate if you would do that now and give her that direction. Thank you.
And we had another hand raised. That's John Hanania. John, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Well, this should be interesting. I have to tell you, I agree with everything that previous speaker said, and I will have to say to that speaker, don't hold your breath. You're speaking to wooden Indians. They're only good to stand in the front of the cigar shop. But I do agree with him. And one thing I have to say, I've dealt with a lot of city manager the last thirty years. By far, and I see she's looking at the screen, by far, she is the worst that Paloma have ever hired. Paloma have not had a decent city manager since Fred Stotter quit. And the reason he quit because he couldn't work with city council member that they will not work among themselves. And I'm sure Teresa Barrett and Mike Healy remember that. Okay? So I don't understand why you paying her the money. And instead of giving her the boot, just pay her whatever it is in the agreement to fire her for no reason. And the city would be better off hiring somebody who is actually gonna work for the city and gonna work for the public, not self-serving after herself. She doesn't give a damn about the public. And you don't like my language, but that's me. I don't sugarcoat anything in any way shape or form. And I'm sure she doesn't like me. And yes, she is very disrespectful person. I spoke to her personally. And it took forever to get to speak to her. And she have no respect. She might kiss your behind and fool you, and you believe everything she says, just like you believe when your employees tell you those good-looking feather things Donna Lucchese are not ducks, they're eagles. So she's not the one to blame. You know, she's really not the one to blame because she's doing whatever the hell she wants to do. The one to blame, it's you. You're the one to blame because you don't hold her accountable in any way, shape, or form. You make promises and you don't come true. So go ahead, have a backbone, put her in her place right now. Okay, and instead of just kissing everybody's behind. And that's all I have to say about this. But I'm sure you guys are not gonna do a damn thing because that's your pattern. You don't do a damn thing. Thank you.
All right. And that is the last hand raised, Madam Mayor. So I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. And we'll close comment on that section of the of the closed comment, I mean, of the consent calendar. And I will look for a motion. If I see Councilmember King's hand is up, followed by Councilmember Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll move consent calendar items A, B, D, E, G, H, I.
And Councilmember Fisher?
And I'll second that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have a roll call vote on those items.
Barrett?
Yes.
Barnacle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Post a bag.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I would just like to say that, you know, the public is has the right to their opinion, everybody does. But they really, it is really important to try and maintain some amount of civility. And we can all agree to disagree, and we can point out things that we think aren't done well. But just making that common comments about our city manager really says more about those people making the comments than it does certainly about our city manager, who got unanimous support from our council on of to say that we think she has done an excellent job in the period that since her last review. So with that, we will go on to item three C, and I will ask Mr. Healy to make comments about that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And then I would briefly say that I agree with the comments you just made. I've worked with four city managers. They've all been excellent. We've been very blessed in the city to have a succession of great city managers. Ms. Flynn checks all the boxes for exceeds expectations, and I had no hesitation in supporting the motion on for her tonight. I think with respect to continued virtual meetings, we're beyond the time where we should be going back to at least hybrid meetings. So that people who want to attend in person and are vaccinated and are comfortable doing that can can do so, and other folks can participate remotely. I'd see this as completely endless. We've been hearing about HVAC problems at city council chambers for months and months and months. And I just don't see any meaningful progress. And I think it's time to put a stop to that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will then see if there's anyone in the public. I think Janice had wanted to speak on this. So if I think she may want to speak on this now.
Madam Mayor, if I can just note, we did receive one public comment on this item prior to the meeting, which is posted online in the agenda packet.
Thank you for that. And I'll ask our moderator to please see if there's anybody on in the Zoom audience who wants to speak on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the public are already doing what I was gonna tell them to do is raise their hand if they want to speak on this item. So we have four hands raised currently. First speaker is Paul G., followed by Janice Kater Thompson. Paul, you may unmute and begin your comments. Paul, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you for the time, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. This bill that we're talking about, A B three sixty one, has about ninety three hundred words. Now, I'm gonna ask every one of the city council members and anyone else who's on camera, raise your hand if you've read the bill. Looks like none of you have actually read this bill. I have. And what I'm trying to tell you is that you are doing something you do not have to do. And I'm gonna suggest that you actually stand with the people on this one, not against the people. And so here's the bottom line. Unlike what Mr. Healy just said, there is no legal basis for making a vaccination requirement for attending any public meeting. Please make sure you don't put that in place. That would be illegal. And what I want to do is to say that through the Bagley-Kean Act, I know it very well. We studied it for the summer when we worked against all those bills up in California. And there were a lot of violations of the Bagley-Kean Act up there. We pointed them all out to them. And it was the legal basis by which we could have actually gone against some of these bills. In fact, we still might. And so at the end of the day, you don't have to repeat those same mistakes. I I actually tracked down Mr. Bagley. He was an assembly member for many years. He still lives here. He's in Marin County. We spoke at length about this. And the bottom line here is that you do need to have public meetings where people fully participate. Those are your legal duties. Now, when you all show your face like you are, but you don't let the public show their face or use any kind of visuals, you're not allowing full participation. That, again, is fully illegal. Yet you still do it. Yet you still just bump along thinking it's all okay. None of this is okay. Every time you you cut us down to two minutes of public comment, when we have twenty one minutes, it's supposed to twenty, you could easily listen to the extra one minute, Mayor Barrett. No, you just do this to get an upper hand on the public. You don't have to do that. You could stand with the public. These laws protect us, the Bagley-Kean Act. This whole thing is about, oh, if you want to, you can actually go ahead and continue with your Zoom meetings. And what you're doing is you're actually working on an executive order. Well, guess what? That executive order expired in August of twenty twenty. And there is no basis for continuing a quote unquote emergency any longer. What we really need to do, you do mention Delta variant in there. We need to put people under oath. We need to have some cross examination. We need some real evidence to show that there is a Delta variant, that you actually have scientific evidence for this. Because just by saying it's so, doesn't make it so. We need to see the evidence. So this is a dangerous path. Make hybrid meetings, allow people to show up as we need. We need to come in and redress our government face to face. That is our constitutional right. And cutting us off into two minutes on Zoom doesn't help us with that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Janice Kater Thompson, followed by Taryn O'Beige. Janice, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Teresa, I want to thank you for your earlier comments. And Patrick, thank you for reading those nine thousand words. I I my real issue is that the audience and we can't. And I really think if you want to have transparency, we need to know how many people are in the meeting participating. We need to know who those people are. And as much as I enjoy having my Band-Aid over my camera, I'd rather be seen during public comment as long as everybody is seen. And I think it's really very important. As far as going back into City Hall, I have concerns. I just got my third vaccine, and I'm very happy that I got my vaccine. But I want to make sure that people are protected before going back in person. But there are ways through Zoom that you can make it much more transparent. And it just feels as though there is not the transparency that you have when you're in a council meeting. And I would appreciate if you would make those considerations to let us know how many people are in the audience. Make sure when somebody's speaking that we can't, that we all see the person speaking. You want to make sure the person's name actually matches the face. And so those would be my requests. And I support Davis Ed Everett's letter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Janice. Next speaker is Taryn O'Beige, followed by Eric Leland. Taryn, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Hi, thank you. Um, yeah, I've been participating in meetings for a long time. And I can tell you that as I sit here in my home, I look at each city council member's face and a few presenter's face, and it feels like I'm the only one here. It's our First Amendment, right? The right to assembly, the right to congregate, something like that. That's all the way back in seventh grade. But I think we have a right to not just dial into a Zoom meeting and hear voices. I think we have a right to be, to fully be present. Up to seventy percent of communication is nonverbal. We don't even get to see our neighbors. I don't get to have the same communication quality as I do when I'm in person at a meeting by looking over at the person next to me, communicating nonverbally, either in writing or through eye contact or through a gesture. And for me, I can tell you, my personal experience is that participating through Zoom is maybe, maybe fifty percent of participating in public. And I think that the city has really fallen short in really giving this hard consideration, hard thought as to what the potential is. Technology is a wonderful thing, and I do not feel like we're using it. My friends that live in other cities, they're able to see each other's faces and chat with each other and see the full participant list. I don't know why we don't. It does feel, lack of a better word tonight, like oppression. It feels like it doesn't feel like a democratic process. So I respectfully submit those comments because when you're a member of the public, it's an entirely different experience. And I think it's important for our city council to know that because you are our elected leaders. We voted for you, and we hope that you care about that. The other thing I wanted to say is a lot of police officers are not getting the vaccine, and I respect their decision.
Taryn, I'm gonna have to pause you there. I don't think that that's relevant to this discussion here. Is there something more you want to say on this topic?
Yeah, I want to talk about whether we're vaccinated or not, and if that if that affects coming to a meeting.
This item is not about vaccines.
It's about attending city council meetings in person, right?
Yes, it is. And please continue your comments on that subject.
Okay, sorry if I misunderstood. I thought part of this had to do with COVID, the pandemic, and whether we're gonna be kept safe or not. And so I guess that's not relevant. So I apologize for not being on topic there.
Thank you, Taryn. Sorry about that. Next speaker is Eric Leland, followed by John Hanania. Eric, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I have a lot of compassion and patience for the the city and the process of figuring out sort of how to conduct business through the pandemic, I think. Regarding hybrid meetings, I think it is time, and there's been plenty of examples of how to do this right, how to do this safely. However, I do want to underscore that I certainly don't hold any ill will for where the city is at right now and not having implemented them now. I think we should have some compassion for the process and that it's difficult. And let's let's just, let's just work together to implement more ways that people can participate, get back to a situation where we can have folks be present in person physically as well as online. And let's make sure that that's absolutely safe. So the pandemic is very much a concern. I think for most of us, many of us expected that we would be beyond this at this point. But the reality is we're not, and we do have to continue to conduct business in a democratic way and an open way and provide a lot of different options. and provide a lot of different options for people to participate. I think the good news is that we've learned a lot about how to do this remotely and how to do this well remotely, although we can improve things such as letting folks know in remote environments who's participating in the meeting, how many folks are there, as well as engage people physically onsite. So just thank you for that concern and focusing more on getting these hybrid meetings set up. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next speaker is John Hanania, followed by Susan Kirks. John, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Boy, I love it when people talk, but it's too bad. On the other end, nobody's listening. They just sit there. I think might be a good idea to buy some earplugs and send one to each one of you so that when people speak, things don't go right through one ear to the other. I have to say, I agree with what Speaker Paul said. Everything he said is true. But one of the things that he might not realize is that you guys don't operate under democracy. You operate under dictatorship with your meetings. Do as I say and not as I do. You don't conduct the meeting fairly. You don't want to hear from the public. You cut the public off. You have no problem talking about issue that you have passion for, which has nothing to do with the meetings on hand, such as like you putting a bicycle ride together and where you're going to meet. Well, why don't you put whatever it is that you want to talk about in, you know, and send it to the clerk? But no, you think you're more important than the public. And when someone like myself speak and doesn't kiss your behind, oh, the comment they make, it's reflecting themselves. Well, Teresa Barrett, get off your high horse and start doing your job. I'm not going to kiss your behind. I'm not.
I'm sorry, John. I'm really struggling to see how this comment is relevant to this. Can you please keep your comments relevant to the the issue of virtual meetings, please? You can have the remainder of your time.
Thank you, Patrick. The virtual meeting, I think if you are going to open it back to the public, the speaker, the young lady who asked about COVID, I think you need to make sure it's safe. And when she brought it up, I think it's relevant. It's absolutely relevant. And you cut her off, Patrick. I don't know why. You have a good habit of cutting people off with the meeting, but yet when the city council talk about things that's not on the agenda in any way, shape, or form, you and I talked about this, you don't cut them off. How is that? How is that right? You know, and Mike Healy goes and says, oh, Teresa Barrett, conduct the meeting just fine, you know? Well, you guys need to really listen to the public, but you don't. And you criticize the public when they tell you the truth. When someone tell you the truth and tell you a fact, you criticize it.
I'm sorry, John. I gave you an option to get back on the topic, but I don't think that you're able to do so. So we're going to move on to the next speaker. Next speaker is Susan Kirks, followed by Bev at Protect Wild Petaluma. Susan, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say that speakers should be able to complete their their comments and and agenda items. And for this agenda item, for the consent calendar, I would like to see the participants' list. Like many of you and people in the audience, I attend multiple, way too many Zoom meetings. But that's just the way of our life now. Public meetings, regional meetings, state meetings, national meetings, and oftentimes, especially in government meetings, the participants' list is shown. And I do agree that that would give the technological opportunity for seeing who's in the audience. And I think that's the very least that the city could do, and I would like to see you do that. In terms of a combined hybrid meeting, when I think about elected leaders that I would like to see and how decisions are made, I also think about the the high importance, as Ms. O'Babe and Mr. Hanania were speaking about, about safety. And I would like to have a vaccination requirement showing vaccine vaccination cards in order to come to a public meeting. And I would like to be assured that everyone in the room has been vaccinated, double vaccinated. Some people are already getting boosters. And that is your responsibility as a city government to ensure safety in public meetings. So those are my comments on this agenda item. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bev at Protect Wild Petaluma. Bev, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Okay, here goes. First of all, I wanted to mention that I believe it was Mr. Healy who brought up the question of vaccination as being a prerequisite for attending a live city council meeting. That said, I like the Zoom meetings, actually. But I do believe that they should be the kind where you have the opportunity to see every participant. I have been at some very large Zoom meetings, probably larger than the city council meetings, where you can see all the participants. And it's true, some of them turn off their cameras, but you, you know, you have that option, and it's kind of nice to know who's there. And there's also the chat where people can address comments to each other individually or to the whole group. And I would like to see that. In terms of vaccination status, I'm not an expert on this, but I I just, I don't know what to say, frankly. Anyway, I guess I have to think this through more. But I think with social distancing and masks, I think we can have an increase in availability of of the meeting. And I don't think that we need to sort of excommunicate anyone who, for whatever reason, doesn't feel safe taking the vaccine. So that's that's my own outlook on it, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Bev. And that's the last speaker that has already spoken. So Madam Mayor, there's another hand that was raised, but somebody who already spoke.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. And with that, we'll close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council. And I see two council members have their hands up, Vice Mayor Barnacle and Councilmember Healy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a I have a question. So two two questions, actually. Do we have a sense of when we could be back with hybrids? Or what the, you know, what the process is and when we might have that? And then the second question is, maybe this is more of a comment, but I a hundred percent would love to see us show who's in the meeting. Because it really, it crushes civic engagement to not know who's there with you. It builds a lot of community to be, to know who's there with you and who you can follow up with. I'm not really a fan of having a chat because I think that's a distraction for everybody involved. And we wouldn't be chatting with each other if we were in person. But I absolutely think that we should, people should know who's in the meeting if they can. Those are my two, one's a question, one's a comment.
Thank you. And I'll ask our city manager. Do you want to respond to that?
Yes. So Vice Mayor Barnacle, to answer your question about how soon we could be do a hybrid meeting, we are updating our AV, the HVAC. We already have some filters in place. So we're we're actually making sure that we have updated AV equipment so we can run hybrid meetings. So that is what we're working on. And because of delays in supplies and trying to hide and trying to purchase these supplies, it's it's definitely taken longer than we had anticipated. But we're hoping by the end of November, so probably maybe December timeframe that we'd be back in hybrid. But we also want to make sure, as you can appreciate, that everybody's safe. And so we have been trying to make sure that we have all those protocols in place to ensure the utmost safety of our public, of our staff, and of our council members. And as as the request for Zoom to be in, right now, we're currently using the webinar format. And I would probably ask Patrick to weigh in a little bit why we've chosen webinar. I believe it's it's to prevent a variety of security breaches. But I will have Patrick weigh in if you can give a really quick synopsis of that.
Thank you, Peggy. And to answer that question, Zoom webinars, that's the format we're using right now as opposed to Zoom meetings where everybody by default can see each other. There's a lot more security with webinars. It's, you know, designed with that. We've been Zoom bombed a few times ourselves, and we've seen other communities out there that have done the Zoom webinars, and they've been Zoom bombed with much, you know, frankly disgusting content that's been shared on those screens. We, in a webinar format, the kind of worst we get to is some audio. But there's been some pretty horrific video that's been shared through web Zoom meetings. So that's kind of the basis for why we're recommending webinars for now. And Patrick, is it? Sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
I think I'm asking the same question you are. So is it the webinar format that does not allow the participant list to to go forward?
That's correct. It's it's not a feature in the webinar that allows the participants to be shown, even even the names. Or I think you can see how many are in attendance, but it doesn't show names. And is there a is there a hybrid version between giving everybody a panel where they can see each other's face and just allowing them to see a list of who's in the audience? That's what I would like is to be able, I totally want to protect against Zoom bombing because it inevitably will happen. I appreciate that. But if we can just show people a list, or maybe in the meeting notes, if we can capture a list of names that were in the audience and put that in the meeting notes or something so that someone could go back and look and see who else was doing that with them. Anything that could show, like, help people to see that who else was in the audience.
Those are really good recommendations. I'll work with staff in our weekly agenda review meeting to discuss some options. We do have, the clerk will be will be, you know, at least identifying how many folks are in the audience, you know, right at the at the start of opening our meetings, our open meetings. But we will look at also adding those to the meeting notes if at all possible.
Awesome. I appreciate the hustle. And with that, I'll move the item.
Councilmember Healy?
Thank you. So I actually, at Paul's suggestion, when he was speaking, I pulled up AB 361 and read it quickly. And there was a feature in it that I didn't see highlighted in the staff report. So I wanted to ask the city attorney, whose hand is conveniently raised already, to comment on this. And that's one of the other things that added Government Code Section 11133, which is the provision we're talking about. But subsection G says this section shall remain in effect only until January 31, 22, and as of that date is repealed. So it looks like we only have a maximum of three months of this. And and the question is, does existing law even authorize hybrid meetings? Or what do we do after this AB 361 goes away? Mr. Danley?
I was muted. After it goes away, we have to comply with the existing teleconferencing requirements, unless there's another change to the law. And I was also, the reason I'd raise my hand is to say that there, it's been our practice, as it is in many communities, for purposes of smoothly managing meetings to conduct the people's business, to ask that they that attendees at their meetings fill out speaker cards and give their name. But but those are requests, and they can't be required. And so one of the things we need to look at with respect to whether we can further adjust the way we do virtual meetings is to make sure we respect the legal right of attendees to to participate and not not give their information. So that's that's something we'll look at in responding to the council about that. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember King?
Thank you. I just have one quick comment. I I do support us getting back to some kind of live slash hybrid meeting as soon as it's technologically feasible, safe, and I'll second the item, second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. But before we go to the vote, I would also like to make the comment. And that is that, under the auspices of this law, we have to vote every thirty days to continue having a remote meeting. So that is why we are having this vote in the first place. So just to make that clear. So can we have the city clerk take the roll call vote? Barrett? Yes. Barnacle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Healy?
No.
King?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Close again?
Yes.
Motion passive, six to one. Any voting no? Thank you very much. And so now we're on to our last item of the consent calendar, and that is item 3F. And that is the resolution authorizing grading prior to final map approval for the Riverbend subdivision project. And I I was reached out to by a person from the community, Kathy Hutchinson, regarding this issue. So I am assuming that she will be looking to speak to this item. So has our city clerk received any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, we received two public comments prior to the meeting. One of them was the comment you noted from President Hutchinson.
Okay. And so I would also like our city council member, Kevin McDonald, who has his hand up before we go with the public comment.
Thanks so much. I believe I need to recuse on this.
Oh, okay.
I'll check out.
Okay, we'll text you to get you back in.
Thank you.
Okay, so Councilmember McDonald is recusing on this. And so now I'll ask our moderator to see if there's anyone in the chamber who'd like to speak on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two, three hands raised right now. First is Paul G., followed by Kathy Hutchinson. Paul, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Thank you, Patrick, for unmuting me. Now, I'm going to ask you to respect my time. It's sacrosanct. You are not to actually get in the middle of my comment, and you are not to cut me off. So just so you're clear about what we're talking about here. I'm going to make any comment I wish, because it's my right to do so. And I will be talking about this item, but I'll be talking about other items as well. Do not cut me off, sir. That would not be correct or legal. Now, what I want to say about this is that we have a very important problem in Petaluma. You understand, it's flooding. We had one recently. It is not hard to understand why we have a flooding problem. It's just that it's inconvenient for some developers who really want to build in the floodplain. Well, so this is another one of those things where you either side with the people or you side with the moneyed interests. It's very simple. We have a sponge. We need to actually make sure that sponge works. The only way to make that sponge work is to no longer build in the floodplain. Period. The end. Thank you very much. That should be in the general plan. There should be no shenanigans to get some things approved before we actually look at what's happening with climate change. Because our our whole tidal slew is going to back up when the seas get rising. The flooding is going to get worse. Come on, folks. Stop looking at your short-term wallets for all your friends who make money at this and start looking at protecting the the tens of thousands. What are we, fifty, sixty thousand now? Sixty thousand people in Petaluma? Yeah, you want to protect us first here and let your money people make profits where they can. Now, with respect to what else we need to actually cover, we have to actually give you actual good evidence and facts for you to look at. I'm going to direct you all to go to an important page on my website, wireamerica.org/foundation. When you are there, you will see a great presentation by a virologist, Jonathan Cooy, who worked for the University of Pittsburgh. He's been working in this arena for over fifteen years. And so you will see that he's telling you the truth about what's going on when you say, how do we be safe? Listen, folks, there's no guarantee. There's no one to make everybody safe. But he does tell you a really important story, and I'm going to tell that story right now. And I encourage you to go listen to him say it again. Here it is. Two nurses at the University of Pittsburgh decided they would come in and take care of. Here it is. Two nurses at the University of Pittsburgh decided they would come in and take care of a patient. Well, one of them had been vaccinated. The other one had not. She missed the day. They come in and they take care of a patient that had COVID.
I'm sorry, Paul. I'm cutting you off. Would the city manager please weigh in on this?
Yes, Mr. McGavin was off topic.
Thank you. And, and actually, I would like, if I could, to ask the city attorney. I believe Mr. Gavin also made an incorrect comment saying that you can speak about anything you want at any time. And I do, it's my understanding that when we have public comment on a specific item, the comments are limited to that item only. Is that correct? Or is there something we need to know?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. And those are long-established requirements and principles of the Brown Act. And, and by the way, it's the Brown Act that governs the city's meetings, not the Bagley-Kean Act that applies to state agencies. So we have public comment on unagendized items, but there's still to be, the topics addressed then are still to be within the city's subject matter jurisdiction. And then we have public comment on agendized items. And this can be seen from all that, and, and from the legislative history of the Brown Act and the case law construing it. It's, it's the public, the purpose is for the public to carry out its oversight function concerning the conduct of its business and to address its legislative officials and their appointees on their areas of responsibility, not on just anything. It's not a soapbox in the public park.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much, city attorney and city manager. And I'll turn it back to you, Patrick, and thank you for acting on that. And go on to the people who want to speak on item 3F.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next speaker is Kathy Hutchinson, followed by Rick Rosenbaum. Kathy, you may unmute and begin your comments.
All right. Am I there?
Yes, you are.
I'm speaking tonight to ask the council to deny the request to start grading at the Riverbend site before the final maps are approved. Overall, the problem with beginning early is that this land will not be able to be restored to its prior condition if the final maps are not approved and the project is abandoned. There are outstanding issues that need to be resolved, and this vital wetland is too ecologically sensitive to risk destroying before every I is dotted and T is crossed. The first issue is that per paragraph seven, eight, nine, and 10 in the grading agreement states, if the final map approval is not given and the development project is abandoned, the developer agrees to restore the area graded to its prior conditions. It's obviously a concern, or else it wouldn't be mentioned in four separate sections. The problem here is that if grading begins, all nine trees left after saving the four heritage trees last year will be removed. As Dr. Sean Smallwood stated in his biological assessment submitted with our appeal, these trees, some of them upwards of 100 feet tall, are providing vital habitat for many of the over 50 special status species identified on the property. And the council themselves literally sent the developer back to the drawing board last year to figure out how to save as many trees as possible. They're obvious, the trees are obviously important to the council, so why risk taking them down if the final maps haven't been approved? The second issue is related to the floodway. In the September Planning Commission meeting, flood rezoning was on the agenda, and a zoning map amendment to modify the floodway zoning district boundaries was presented. It was presented as an administrative task to change the floodway maps to be consistent with the maps in the 2025 general plan. But there were so many questions and concern raised by the public and the commissioners alike, including asking which map is correct, that the item was tabled to date uncertain. Figure five of the Riverbend MND conveniently shows the floodway with the proposed modifications suggested at the Planning Commission meeting last month. However, when looking at the floodway maps that were presented as the ones needing to be modified, if you blow up the Riverbend site to match the scale of the overhead house layout and the architectural plans, and you overlay the two, Riverbend House number one is fully, and Houses number two, 19 and 20 are partially in the floodway. I realize the city has already given initial approvals to the project, but since there seem to be two maps circulating, banks may not be comfortable. Funding and insurance companies may not be willing to provide coverage if there's a question about whether or not the project is being built in the park, built, partially built in the floodway. All of these issues increase the risk of the project being abandoned. This isn't some cement lot with a couple of weeds on it. It's a vital, ecologically sensitive wetland that is too important to risk destroying before the final maps are approved. I ask that you deny this request and not.
I'm sorry, Kathy, your time has expired. Next speaker is Rick Rosenbaum, followed by Stephanie Sanchez. Rick, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Good evening, council. Rick Rosenbaum here, senior project manager with Lennox Homes, where the home building company that will be building out the Riverbend development. I just wanted to introduce myself tonight and let the council know and staff know that I'm here to answer any questions that you might have on this request to permit grading before the final map approval. We wanted to make clear some information that may not be completely clear regarding the flood, floodplain of this project. Our civil engineer, Stephen Lafranke, is available tonight to clarify that if the council wishes that. In addition, the wetlands question that was raised has been relooked at under the Corps' current rules. This project no longer has any wetlands, as delineated by the Army Corps and the Regional Board. The rules have changed since this project was looked at in 2015. In fact, the Corps requires that the project be relooked at, and that was, was done in 2020. So no permits are required now for any wetlands to be filled because there are no wetlands on this project. In addition, one of the reasons we request that we grade before final map is because there are trees on this property, and there are nesting birds that can occur during the season of nesting. We'd like to remove those trees prior to the nesting season, which starts February the first. So that is another reason we are here tonight, so that we can get approval to do that. We think it's important to do that before the nesting season begins. We also are completely aware that we're off to a wet start to the rainy season, an unexpectedly wet start. It is not our intention to start grading this project tomorrow. There are mitigation requirements for this project before we start grading, and we are fully aware of those mitigation requirements and intend to abide by all of those, which are geological, cultural, noise, and biological. So we are just getting the pieces in place to allow us to start grading when the site is dry enough to do that, and when these mitigation measures are in place to do that. I just wanted to let the council know that that was our, that's our intention. It's not like bulldozers will be moving to the site tomorrow or next week. It takes a fair amount of time and energy to start a project of this scale and, and size. So we are here tonight to answer any other questions if those come up. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Next speaker is Stephanie Sanchez, followed by Bev at Protect Wild Petaluma. Stephanie, you may unmute and begin your comments.
No, I, I thank you for letting me speak or giving me this opportunity. I think I represent quite a few people in the affected area. There's just a fact that the maps right now put four of these houses in the floodplain, and that it's a complicated issue, and that the maps are not changed yet. That's just a plain fact. So we should wait until there's a final map approval. There must be some questions as to whether or not that will actually happen. And that's why we are so concerned, because grading and removing the numerous trees that exist there will completely affect the viability of that, of that area. It will, it will cause it to become extremely vulnerable if there is more water or even an atmospheric stream. So we're very worried that the soil, which is expansive soil, and the proximity to the bank top, that should that atmospheric flooding occur, it would be very disastrous for many of the people that live in that direct area. So we're asking you to simply put off this project until we can be completely sure that it's actually going to be approved. This project violates the general plan, and it's simply going to commit more houses to flood vulnerability. So we're extremely worried about this, and we hope that you guys will do the right thing and put this off until it has become a legal development. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Stephanie. Next speaker is Bev, followed by M. Sullivan. Bev, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Okay. Thank you again. I don't understand why there needs to be grading, even what they call rough grading before the final map. Why not just wait until we are sure? And again, it's been brought up, the question of if the final map, if things don't work out, that the company would grade it to the prior condition, but they can't do that. They can't replace the trees that they took down. We, we can't destroy a body and put it together again with, like, little pins. It won't be alive. And grading not only kills all the plants in that area, including, like I said, the trees that were not going to be saved, but it destroys the soil structure and the many unseen microorganisms that make up the living soil. We don't appreciate what an amazing thing soil is. And I believe that not, that the city really should be condemning land in the river corridor as being too hazardous to build on because of flood exacerbation and too destructive to the carbon sink and biodiversity functions of natural land. We are not going to be able to put this whole area back together again if we look at it with such ignorance. So, and to quote a poem, "I think that I shall never see a poem as lovely as a tree." Anyway, thank you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Bev. Next speaker is M. Sullivan, followed by Susan Kirks. M. Sullivan, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Yes, good evening. I would like to ask you not to approve the Barella's/Lafranki's request to begin grading the Riverbend development site. The mitigated negative declaration clearly indicates that part of the development encroaches on the floodway, i.e. extends to the channel of the Petaluma River and overlaps with the city's floodway district, end quote. Note that the MND also mentions expansive soils and proximity to the bank top. It's not permissible to build in the floodway. The rezoning of the floodway, the city engineer Gina Benedetti-Petnick and the M Group consultant Heather Hines presented to the Planning Commission on September 14th would curiously remove the Riverbend development from the floodway. Gina has admitted that the FEMA maps on which the floodway and floodplain are delineated are, quote, inaccurate. She's admitted that on the record. Regional Water Quality Control Board said if we use the FEMA maps, we're going to get it very wrong. We will fail. Remember that it is we who send the modeling information to FEMA to update those maps. So the data driving this floodway rezoning are entirely being manipulated by our city consultants and our engineer. Importantly, in this time of critical, critical climate change impacts, Gina acknowledged to the Planning Commission that it's not known when the 2016 data were collected. In other words, we don't know how old the underlying data are. So we're going to need the county or some impartial oversight to see why this floodway designation is changing at this time and changing just in advance of the Riverbend developers breaking ground. The floodway delineation that should be used is the one that was in effect at the time the project was approved. This is standard policy. That means the map showing that the western edge of the Riverbend development, approximately four houses that are in the floodway, should not be buildable. To seek to change the delineation of the floodway and to rely on FEMA mapping that we supplied the data for and for which we don't know how old the data are, as opposed to just fully going to what FEMA is recommending now, which is 2D, is ludicrous. Allowing the developer to forge ahead and grade this Riverbend property, knowing the western edges in the floodway violates our general plan and would commit more infrastructure to flood vulnerability. It would also pass the liability on to the city, where we know this development as designed is a high flood risk and would condemn infrastructure and possibly lives to a catastrophe. Please don't change our process to benefit the developer and pass the risk on to the citizens. There's a lot of sensitivity on this parcel, and it merits sticking with the plan. Why introduce this unacceptable level of risk by artificially changing the zoning to appease the developer, lower their liability? It doesn't pass the sniff test. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Next speaker is Susan Kirks, followed by John Hanania. Susan, you may unmute and begin your comments.
I'm speaking on this agenda item tonight on behalf of the Drone Audubon Society. I'm the president of the Audubon Organization in Sonoma County and also Paula Lane Action Network, a nonprofit conservation organization responsible for saving the Paula Lane open space property and doing extensive work, which we continue to do to return to our role there. So speaking in that capacity, I wanted to note, as others have, to, as a city council, to suggest to you that this, this request, even coming forward, is really quite urgent. And I, I'm not surprised, based on Petaluma's history of approving developments and never going for EIRs when they should be required when mitigated negative declarations are put forward. But I do recall the review of this development proposal and Dr. Sean Smallwood's biological resources report submitted by the community, which directly relates to what your developer representative is saying tonight. They want to grade, and they really want to remove trees now because they want to prevent birds coming to the property to nest from being able to do so. And when you think about that, birds choose their nesting sites very carefully. They have to be safe for the birds. They have adequate nutrition to be able to feed young. And that really says it all for me and for my organizations, because conservation and preserving our environment are so important. And we really need to have a new paradigm here in Petaluma, where we prioritize the biological resources review in addition to all of the other environmental impacts. When these types of proposals for development come before you, I was so disappointed in the city council's approval of this development when you had the biological resources report of Dr. Sean Smallwood, one of the most respected biologists in the state of California, before you with extensive information about why this development actually should not even occur on this site. And so I would also like to suggest to you, and I'd like for members of the community to know, if I were your elected council member, I would consider introducing a motion to reconsider the, the decision that the city council made to approve this development. And if that pathway could be created, the development could be returned to the city council for review with all of the public input that you have received. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Susan. Next speaker is John Hanania, followed by Terran O'Baid. John, you may unmute and begin your comments.
All right. Well, I'll keep it short and sweet. I do agree with a lot of the speakers. I agree with the previous speaker, Susan Kirk. The one important thing that you need to look at, and we've been talking about this for quite some time, when it comes to development, you need water. And it's been a big issue about water. Where's the water? So that's two. And three, and I hope, I hope I don't get interrupted. I'd like to respond to the comment that was just made by Peggy Flynn, Teresa Barrett, and the clarification that was given by the infamous city attorney. It'd be nice if everybody followed the rules. I'd like to remind you all, especially you, Patrick, the time we had the agenda for Lynch Creek Trail, when Brian Barnicle started talking about something completely different. when Brian Barnicle started talking about something completely different. And I got interrupted because I responded to what he was saying. The Brown Act, it clearly applied to everybody, city council and all. Did Teresa Barrett interrupted him? No. Did Eric Danley stepped in and say, hey, wait a minute, this is not an agenda? No. Did Eric, did Patrick interrupted him? No. Did Peggy Flynn stepped in and say, wait a minute, you can't?
John, please, we're, we're trying to conduct the, the people's business here. If you have a general public comment, please write it into the city clerk or bring it up during general public comment. But please keep your comments to this, this item. You may unmute and continue.
I was only responding to what was said during this item, okay? And I don't know why you keep interrupting, interrupting other people. And I don't know why you do that, Patrick. Did, did Teresa and Peggy and Eric, did they all, three of them said it during this? Yes, they did. I have a right to respond and I'm responding. I am part of the public. And so if you want the Brown Act, then you follow the Brown Act, practice what you preach. Go ahead, interrupt me. You know, I'll just give you a call tomorrow and we can have another discussion. Good night.
Next speaker is Taryn O'Beid. Taryn, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Hi, thank you. Please deny the Riverbend developers' request to start grading before they meet the important milestone of having an approved final map. I live in the neighborhood next door. Everyone knows we're a flood problem. I remember I attended this hearing and I remember that it was stated that there are wetlands on the northeast part of this land. And I get that the developer says that there aren't anymore. But pardon me, I don't have much confidence in what the developer says because they stand to make a lot of money by saying that. Okay, so my concern is the flooding. If you grade it now before, okay, actually, my concern is process. We've approved this development, sure, but there's a process in place. And when you're doing a development, you've got to make sure that you have a proper foundation on which to build. And if we don't even know what the plans are for building, if there is no final map, how can you start bulldozing everything, disrupting everything, chopping down the trees, disrupting dirt in the floodway, because four homes are going to be in the floodway there, so that the next time we get an atmospheric storm in a couple of weeks, it's going to pour into the river? That just doesn't make sense. We have a process in place for a reason. And when it comes to development, especially in ecologically sensitive areas such as this one, to me, it totally makes sense to follow the process. And I don't believe that if we chop down the trees, if we overturn what might be wetlands and if we loosen up the soil in the floodway and then ultimately they don't get all the approvals that they need and there is no final map, look at what we've done. We've absolutely pulverized, destroyed habitat, creatures and the trees that soak up river there in the floodway. How great is it that they drink up the river? Every acre of wetland holds 1 million gallons of water. Why would we risk, why would we risk destroying that right there in the floodway or right next to the floodway or partially in the floodplain at all when all of the checks for all of the milestones have not been done? To me, that would be not good planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Taryn. Next speaker is Kate Greenspan, followed by Veronica Oh. Kate, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Thank you so much. I'm here tonight to state my concern for the commencement of grading prior to final map approval at the Riverbend Site. My concern is for the ecology of this piece of land. Trees would be needlessly cut down and soil disturbed. And then in the event of the project being stalled or abandoned, as other speakers have said, what then, there is no going back. How would this area be restored to its previous state if this should happen? I ask that the city council will deny this request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kate. Next speaker is Veronica Oh. Veronica, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Good evening, council. Good evening, community and staff. I would like to just agree with many of the speakers that this particular item, we really are, we have the cart before the horse on this one. I think following procedure is very important. They're, they're there for a reason. We have to ask ourselves, what is Petaluma going to gain by giving this approval tonight? I think it is important to get the maps that we need and the information we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. And I don't see any other hands up, so I will turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council. I see Councilmember Fisher's hand is up.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Well, I can't vote to overturn the project tonight. That's not in my purview. But I am not going to support this request and I'm going to do it. And I'm thinking long and hard about it. Because the land as it exists now, as many of the speakers have said, are absorbing a lot of water, right? And the water's probably not running off that site, although I don't know because I wasn't down there during the last storm. But if we allow this site to go ahead and be graded and packed down and get ready for housing, that means you now have a total site that has no imperial, impervious ability to store any water and all the water, if we get anymore, is going to go off. And we don't know if we're going to get any more water or when we're going to get any more rain or when we're going to get the atmospheric storm. And so these are not regular times. Normally, normally this would be sort of an innocuous request, right? And there would be no question. It's like, of course, go ahead and do it. But you know, the uncertainty that we're living in is so great that I think that if we allow this move forward and that we're putting everybody at risk, the river, the neighbors, and so for that reason, I won't support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Barnacle, followed by Councilmember Postecay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the piece that catches me is I really don't understand why we're expediting it. And the, the statement in the discussion that says if the subdivider fails to secure final map approval or the project is abandoned after grading is complete, subdivider is required to restore the area graded to its prior condition. That's impossible if you remove hundred-foot tall trees. So if, you know, for me, that, that right there is the piece that says let's follow process. There's just no way that if something goes awry that, that we can actually restore to the current condition. So I'm, I'm a no on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Postecay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I'm in agreement with councilmembers Fisher and Barnacle. I have looked at the, the Planning Commission meeting from last month or I guess two months ago, an hour closer to two months, where, where I believe this, well, whatever issue they're being asked to, the, the map replacement, they asked for additional information about who was benefiting from this. And as I drove around to look at some of the areas, you know, I, I immediately stopped in front of the Riverbend Project, you know, it was listed at, at Planning Commission meeting as gaining over 10,000 square feet out of the floodway by this change in map. I would think that would lower the cost of the grading they needed to do, but I don't know that for a fact. And I, I think there are too many questions here to go ahead with this. I'll leave it at that right now.
Thank you. And I, I'll weigh in on this. And this project has always been a very borderline project. It's, there's, there's a lot of things I think are wrong with it. I ended up voting for it. But, but I've never been convinced that it's the right project in the right place. But when I hear the builder say that there are currently no wetlands on the property that they've been redefined since 2015, you know, we've been in the most severe drought we have ever been in. And, you know, and we're using that time to redefine the existence of wetlands. You know, that, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me. I, you know, I don't think the definition of wetlands has changed. And I do think that several of the speakers brought up the whole question of process. And I, I want to see process gone through in this issue. If the idea of moving this forward, as Mr. Rosenbaum said, was to remove the trees so that the animals don't build nests there, I'm sorry, you know, there's a process. And if that process involves the, the fact that the birds have come and built a nest there, then the, then this, we, that's why we would then delay this project. That is our process. We're not going to sub, you know, just go against that for no real good reason. So, and I do think that there are issues about those four lots. And I, I want everything answered before we go forward. And I want the final map approved. So I'm going to call on Councilmember King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we know the timing of bringing forward the final tentative map to the Planning Commission? I'm not sure. I think Heather, you would probably be the person to ask.
I, I was just going to say, I think we have Heather with us.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. I actually, that is, I'm going to defer to Jeff Stutzman. That is when a project goes from tentative map to final map, that is a proj- process that is overseen by Public Works. So Jeff is managing that process from Public Works. And so the, the timing for the final map, I'll, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Hello, council members. And we are currently reviewing the final map as well as the public improvement plan set. So we're in, in process. We're working with Steve La Frankie's office. I, I mean, Steve might give a more closer deadline. I mean, we're probably two months out. We're really just doing a technical review by our outside surveyor for the main piece of the final map.
And ordinarily, is something like grading brought in before the final tentative map is approved?
It's been more common this, this time around. We've done it on Casa Grande project as well as the Birdie Ranch project. Those are the two most recent project examples.
So, so sort of common, but not the standard procedure 100% of the time?
Yeah, I mean, it gives, it gives the opportunity for the developer or the contractor to kind of get out ahead of it, be a little more efficient.
Okay. Well, it sounds like this is going to, that piece of, of, of this project is going to have to come in after, after the process of having the final tentative map be reviewed by the Planning Commission. So I don't know, the procedure is for us tonight, but it's pretty clear this is not going forward.
Can I just clarify that, Councilmember King? The, the final map does not go back before the Planning Commission. It only, it only comes to the council for approval as consistent with the approved tentative map. So just in terms of process, I want to make sure that's, that's clear. A final map comes back before the city council for approval in compliance with the tentative map that, that was approved and any conditions or, or, you know, mitigations or anything that needed to occur with it.
Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Fisher, followed by our city attorney.
Given that, maybe the city attorney can give me some direction, but I, I don't know how to make a motion to deny the staff recommendation and not approve the, the final, the grading before the final map.
Okay, we'll go to the city attorney.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to clarify when the, when the final map comes back to the council, that is the largely ministerial approval. It really is the question before the council will be whether the, in, in the first instance, before Jeff and then before the council will be whether or not the final map is in substantial conformance with the, the tentative map. But this action is discretionary. The council doesn't need to approve it. And the real, it seems to me that one of the main considerations about these actions, which can be approved, is, is the one that the President Barnacle focused on. And that is whether or not approval prior to the final map approval creates a potential problem in terms of returning to the status quo if the final map's not approved. So, so all that needs to be done is for this to not be approved. And it doesn't go forward. And, and the council has that ability. If, if there are more questions for me about that in terms of the procedure, happy to answer. But it could, it probably the easiest thing is to not move approval because then we don't have to have, have, have findings for nonapproval.
So are you suggesting that we have, no, no one makes a motion to approve?
That, that, I think that would be an easy way.
As opposed to denying?
Right, because we, we don't have, I don't think we have in the record that support, but it's discretionary to the council.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So.
I just gave a reason why that's, that's could be, you know, within this council's sound discretion. So thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So is there anyone who wants to make a motion to, to move item three F? Not seeing anyone, it dies for lack of emotion. And we will move on to our, end of our consent calendar. Thank you for that guidance and thank you for the discussion, both council and the public. And we are now moving on to new business. And this is a resolution appointing a council member to the Bylaws Subcommittee of the Sonoma County Mayor's Council Members Association. City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A little history on this. In September 2019, the Sonoma County Mayor's and Council Members Board of Directors appointed a Subcommittee of elected officials to update the bylaws for the Mayor's and Council Members Association. And Mayor Barrett was one of those appointed members. The Subcommittee started their work in 2019, but due to various emergencies, including wildfires and COVID-19, the board suspended work for a while. They're now looking to pick back up the work that they began in 2019 to update the bylaws. And the board has given the opportunity for those who were previously appointed to decide if they wanted to continue serving on the board. Mayor Barrett has requested this item be added to the agenda to see if any council members are interested in taking over first seats on that Subcommittee. Just so you know, the appointments must be approved by a majority of the board members. And the board intends to hold a special meeting on November 18th to ratify those appointments to the bylaws Subcommittee. So tonight, if anyone is interested, I think Mayor, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you very much. I've been working with the mayor of, the then mayor of Santa Rosa, Tom Schwedhelm, and two people from two of the smaller cities. And the way this committee would be set up is there must be a representative from the city of Petaluma and the city of Santa Rosa. And then two other positions from any other cities. I, I wasn't certain at the time that I, I wanted to see if there was anybody on the council who might want to be involved with this because this is looking at how we want to have our mayors and council members meetings work perhaps more coherently and more regionally than we have currently been able to do. And we found out that through COVID, we've had a lot of difficulty meeting in any way to have any kinds of coordination between the cities because of potential Brown Act violations. So. So, um, these were the kind of issues that we wanted to address and kind of bring this group into the 21st century. Um, I'm happy to go ahead and continue doing it, but I did want to give an opportunity to anyone else who might want to do that, because it does have to be someone from our city. Now, no one has been knocking on my door to say that they wanted to, uh, be on this committee. And I totally understand everybody is, um, overcommitted. So I, 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 no one, no pressure here, but I did want to give those opportunities. Councilmember Fisher?
Yeah, I appreciate that opportunity. And I really appreciate the fact that you're serving and doing this work. And, and I, I encourage you to continue it.
And I'm happy to do that. I just thought I should ask before I just assumed I would take this position, so.
I, I don't have the time and I don't feel like I have the, the tenure that is required to contribute in a meaningful way. So I'm gonna bow out.
Okay, well, I don't need everybody to go through it. I, I'd love to do it, but I can't. You know, I, I totally get it and I can do this. Uh, but I did want to get it agendized and make sure that we're all on the same page on this. So, um, I don't think we need, do we need to actually, um, vote for me to go ahead? Kendall?
I don't think we need to. I'll check, Eric. If the mayor is wanting to continue her service on the committee and we're not appointing a different council member, no action is required, correct?
Yep.
And he, oh, good. I, I was, I was just thinking, I thought we forgot to let, uh, Councilmember McDonald back in, but I do see him. So, sorry, I, I had just continued without seeing you. Um, okay, so then without it, we can just go ahead and not, um, act at all on this. Okay, so thank you very much. And I will report back to you as things develop on that front. So with that, we will move to the public hearing. And, um, this is where we are going to have Spanish translation in addition to the, um, the regular council meeting. And I, uh, believe our Spanish translator may want to make that message, uh, make that announcement again at this time. But I'm not certain about that. So I'm not seeing Martine on, um.
I'm going to, I know that it's difficult if, if it's already been started. I'm gonna end translation and I think that should make Gustavo be able to talk here. So I'm gonna end it and then I'll restart it after, um, he's made the announcements. So hold on just one second.
Thank you.
Okay, Gustavo, you should be able to speak to the audience now.
Perfect, thank you. Para todas aquellas personas que están interesadas en escuchar la interpretación de el, eh, la sección pública que se va, que va a comenzar ahorita, en la parte de abajo de su barra de herramientas va a aparecer un mundo y ahí pueden apretar la, apretarle y les va a dar la opción de escuchar la interpretación en español. Okay, we're good to go.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. And, um, we are going to now start the public hearing. Um, number one, to receive input from the community regarding boundaries and composition of districts for city council member district-based elections pursuant to Election Code Section 10010. And, um, we will have our city attorney lead off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, council members of the public. What I'm gonna do is just make a brief introductory comment and then introduce Elizabeth Stitt with, um, Redistricting Partners, um, who's here to provide a PowerPoint presentation tonight for the council and the public that gives an overview of the districting process um, and some of the criteria for establishing districts. And then after she's concluded, I'll touch on some more items in the staff report um, so that we can then, um, take public comment and council comments. And, and staff will be taking notes, um, to, to, to gather that input as part of the process. So, um, the staff recommendation, um, consistent with the, a title for this item that the mayor just read, is that the council hold this first of two public hearings, um, that are to be held prior to the drawing of draft district maps and receive input from the public on composition and number of voting districts and request additional information needed, um, for the second public hearing, um, which, uh, as you can tell, and is indicated in the, in the, um, schedule, the draft schedule for the districting process. Um, is, that's currently scheduled for November 15th. Although, as I've announced earlier tonight at the council's direction, we're gonna be seeking to extend the process and expand the opportunity for public participation. So, um, so with that, um, Liz, hopefully you're ready to, to walk us through the PowerPoint presentation and to share that. And thank you for being with us tonight to do so.
Of course, yes. Very happy to be here with everyone and good evening. Uh, my name's Liz Stitt. I'm a redistricting manager for Redistricting Partners. Um, it is my understanding that the city is exploring districting, um, going forward. So tonight, I will be going through that option with you under the California Voting Rights Act and what that would look like potentially. So let me just go ahead and set up my screen real fast, one second. Okay, so you should be able to see my presentation at this point. So on tonight's agenda, we will be going over the California Voting Rights Act and why that's relevant here, what is districting? And then we'll get into the traditional districting principles, which guide us through the mailing process. Then we'll talk a little bit about the Fair Maps Act, uh, and how the public can participate and should participate in this process if we choose to go forward with it. And then we'll talk a little bit about the public hearing schedule. So the California Voting Rights Act, it is a state law. It was passed, uh, in the early 2000s. It prohibits the use of at-large election systems in local government, uh, if there is racially polarized voting. So just a reminder to folks, at-large is the voting system that Petaluma uses. It essentially means anyone from the city can run for office regardless of where they are located. And then all of the people voting, um, it is citywide, uh, and districted obviously would change that. And then racially polarized voting is defined as differences in voting patterns, which can be shown to be correlated to race, religion, national origin, or membership in other protected classes. So for example, if there is a historically black neighborhood, um, and they often historically vote for one candidate, um, and then there is a white neighborhood and they vote in the opposite way, that would be evidence of some racially polarized voting. So the California Voting Rights Act, it builds off of the Federal Voting Rights Act and it expands it in regarding it to districted elections in two key ways. So the federal law uses this, uh, majority minority district as a standard for vulnerability. And that is essentially the citizen voting age population uh, of a protected class that is over 50% in that area. Um, so that it has to be a majority versus the California Voting Rights Act. It only requires that, uh, the protected class has the ability to influence. So the threshold is lower here. Uh, and the CVRA does require that plaintiffs get full reimbursement for legal fees associated with any successful challenge. Um, but, uh, it can be lessened or, uh, eliminated if the district follows a strict and prompt process for districting. Um, so theoretically, it would save taxpayer dollars, assuming the, uh, case is successful. So definition of districting, pretty simple. It is the initial process of creating election district boundaries. So it essentially does two things. First, it establishes who can run for office. They have to live within those boundaries in order to qualify for that election. And then who can vote for that election? So only people who live in that district would be able to vote, uh, for their candidate. So that's a little bit about what districting does do. Uh, this is a little bit about what it doesn't necessarily do. So, uh, how the city decides to govern, uh, the city can still work to achieve goals that benefit the city as a whole rather than interests of a single district. So, uh, we have been doing this for a while now. We've heard concerns from other agencies often around this time in the process. Like, they're worried that this might create many fiefdoms, right? If we're, we go to a district, uh, but often we've seen the opposite be true. Um, oftentimes in at-large elections, we've seen, uh, elected officials, trustees, um, reward their constituency group. Um, so I've heard of those being called fiefdoms as well. So you see it on both sides of the spectrum. What it really is here is a cultural issue. It depends on how the city council wants to work together. So you do have the option to still work together as a city, working for the entire city, or you can work, um, for your district. It is completely up to you guys. Um, and then how services or relationships between the city and the public are managed. So the public will still have representation at city hall. They'll still be able to call, uh, their representative and, uh, ask for aid assistance, uh, like they normally would. So that really shouldn't change because of districting either. And then there are a number of criteria that we use to draw lines. So these are traditional districting principles. They have been established, um, throughout the country, uh, through the Supreme Court. Or, uh, these, for example, this list of criteria is written in our state law. So it's a very established, uh, way of drawing lines at this point. And these are here to prevent gerrymanders. So we want to keep this a fair and transparent process and that's why this is here. So first and foremost, each, uh, district has to be relatively equal in size. And I want you to think about, uh, relatively equal in size in terms of the US census population. That is what we will be basing this off of. We're not going to be basing it off of citizens or, uh, voters. And what is equal population? Um, in the state of California, each district has to be, uh, well, the total deviation has to be less than 10%. So there is a little bit of wiggle room. For Congress, there can only be one person difference between districts. So, uh, there is more leeway, uh, with local governments. And the whole idea of having a 10% or less deviation is to just ensure that we're not breaking up neighborhoods, we're not breaking up communities of interest. Um, so we don't dilute their voices. Next, we want to have our districts be contiguous. So it's totally okay if you've never heard this word before. You're probably not gonna hear it anywhere outside of redistricting. It basically just means that you can draw the district with one line and that it's kept one whole unit. So there aren't little islands floating around. And there are two different types of contiguity. You have literal contiguity and then you have functional contiguity. Literal contiguity is, as it sounds, it's literally right next to each other. Uh, and then functional contiguity is, can you actually walk there? Can you actually travel to, uh, the place that's next to it? So an example of something that's not functionally contiguous is if there is a freeway that's, uh, blocking, uh, entrance to the, this other neighborhood next door. Or if there is a train track that is preventing folks from successfully crossing the street, that would not be functionally contiguous. So these are two concepts that we have to think about while we're going through the redistricting process. And then next, we want to keep districts compact and that's in appearance and function. So there are often all of these scientific ways of trying to figure out how compact a district is. Um, and the state of California doesn't really use that. It uses a definition that I think is pretty eloquent and simple. Essentially, um, it means you don't bypass a nearby population for something that's more distant. Other states use definitions like they outlaw funny shapes. I think that's in the Idaho, uh, uh, constitution, so. Um, but you know, that is, and beauty is in the eye of the beholder, so. I like California's definition. Next, we want to maintain communities of interest. This is more important than ever, especially after the passage of the Fair Maps Act, which really emphasizes community input. Um, so a definition of what a community of interest is. It's a group of people, it's a neighborhood, it's a community who have similar policy concerns and would benefit from being, uh, districted together. Um, so another way of thinking about them is they are the building blocks of districts. Uh, it could include ethnic and language minority groups. Uh, but this is really supposed to be a subjective and open-ended, um, definition to be as inclusive as possible. And under the Federal Voting Rights Act, uh, there are protected classes. And this includes Latinos, Asians, and African Americans. Um, and I do want to point out, uh, that while race can be considered a community of interest, it cannot be the predominant factor in drawing district boundaries. There is one exception to that, um, if there is a Voting Rights Section 2 compliance issue. But the lawyers will let us know, uh, if there is anything like that going on. Uh, but that's the only exception to that rule. And so a community of interest can include ethnic and language minority groups, but it absolutely can include things like your neighborhood or the downtown region or the more rural area. Homeowners and renters are a very common one as well. These are the questions that we like to ask people before they testify, uh, just to get people thinking about their own community of interest. Uh, so you'll probably hear this question over and over from us, um, going into the future. So does the community have a shared culture characteristic or bond? Uh, we've been hearing a lot of testimony lately on, uh, their communities coming together during COVID-19 or during a forest fire. What resources did they share? Uh, personal stories have been really impactful during this, um, redistricting cycle. And then is the community geographic in nature? Can it be mapped? This is very important for the demographers to know, to ensure that we're not, um, cutting through communities and diluting people's voices. And then what is the community's relationship to, uh, the city of Petaluma? And then how is it affected by the city council's, um, decision-making? And then finally, the last, uh, criteria on this list is follow city, county, local government line. So these are already established lines. Um, they often can be considered a community of interest. Um, so it is a good way of justifying the line drawing process. And then, of course, there is the new law, the Fair Maps Act. It was passed a few years ago. Technically, uh, Petaluma would be under the, the California Voting Rights Act, um, during the districting process. Um, but it is good to know that this is what's, uh, standard practice for the state. So, uh, first and foremost, um, this is a very transparent process. That is the goal with the Fair Maps Act, um, and encourage public participation. There are many, um, requirements under the law, uh, that requires, um, the public to, uh, or requires the agency to reach out to the public, make sure that they have all the access they need to information on the process. And then under the Fair Maps Act, uh, agencies cannot use incumbents or candidates, um, as a community of interest. And then, eh, we cannot draw districts to advantage or disadvantage a political party. And then if we do go forward with districting, there will be many ways that the city will And then if we do go forward with districting, there will be many ways that the city will be reaching out uh, for public input. The first one, as you can see here, is the COI form, the Community of Interest Form. It asks a list of questions that we need uh, to know. So it's um, easy on them. We ask the questions, they fill it out and either email it or um, submit it online. And then the city, uh, if we do go forward, will be using Districter. This is a program that allows uh, the public to draw two different types of maps. They can draw their COI maps, so their community of interest maps, or they can draw districted maps. Um, we highly encourage the public to uh, draw maps once the mapping system is up. Um, we have based uh, previous CVRA conversion uh, on publicly submitted maps. So we did that for the city of Napa and the city of Davis a couple of years ago. Uh, so we highly encourage the public to use this kind of publicly submitted map. Um, and then we have the hearing schedule. So this is all tentative. Um, but uh, the next hearing theoretically could be November fifteenth. Uh, so discuss communities of interest and really encouraging the public to um, submit their information, their testimony. And then December sixth could be the public hearing to gather input on draft maps. And then finally, December twentieth determining the final maps. But all of this also uh, depends on whether uh, you get the extension. Um, so I will actually turn it back over to Eric. Um, that is the end of my presentation. I'm also happy to take questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Liz. Um, Madam Mayor, unless there are council questions, I'd like to hit a few remaining items in the staff report and then Liz and I can both be available for council questions. And then, of course, we want to hear from the public.
Okay. Um, yes, go ahead if you want to finish up the presentation and then we'll take council questions, then go to the public and then come back for comments.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so just in terms of our, our process, they got us here and hu- and, and the process going forward. Um, as I think most, most of members of the public are aware, October fourth of twenty twenty-one, the council adopted um, a resolution declaring its intent to initiate procedures to consider transitioning um, from at-large to district elections um, i- in accordance with the California Voting Rights Act. That was um, in response to a, a demand letter received from Kevin Shankman of the Shankman and Hughes Firm. Um, pursuant to the districting transition process, the, the city is required to hold at least two public hearings over a period, not more than thirty days, prior to maps being drawn. Um, and the purpose of those is for the community to provide input regarding the composition of the districts. Um, in view of the criteria which you just, which Liz discussed. This is the first of those two hearings. As Liz noted, the second one is currently scheduled for November fifteen. So once the council receives the public comment, it will prescribe criteria to be used to create one or more district maps to be presented to the public for comment and discussion. They will have the chances, as Liz mentioned, to, to suggest their own maps using the Districter tool or, or manually if they choose by submitting those. Um, the in, and as, as that's discussed, the council will provide further direction to, for, for preparation of a final map or maps to be presented for a final vote by the council um, and adoption as a districting, um, pursuant to a districting ordinance. By staying on the um, the statutory schedule on the Voting Rights Act, the California Voting Rights Act, that, that does have the effect of capping fees that Mr. Shankman may be able to demand he be reimbursed um, at thirty thousand dollars um, subject to CPI adjustment. So, so that's one reason why we're adhering to that. Um, as, as a reminder, the council has directed that we seek the ninety-day extension to provide for additional time for the, for the public process, public input and council consideration. So we'll be doing that in accordance with the council's direction. If, if we're successful, that will extend the safe harbor period from January fourth, twenty twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two until April fourth, twenty twenty-two. So providing significant additional time. The um, the statutory districting criteria that Liz discussed and other criteria that, that are, are sometimes taken into account, that may be taken into, into account are listed in the staff report, so I won't repeat those. So in terms of the public input, um, the mapping tools haven't been available yet, but they will be. And they'll be on a website that's being, been created for, for the districting process. It's cityofpetaluma.org/districtelections. Um, that, that, that link is in the, in, is in the staff report for, for this item. See the, and I mentioned the next public hearing scheduled for the fifteenth. The public's encouraged to provide in- input via emails to a, an email address that's been created for that, which is um, districtelections@cityofpetaluma.org. And, and uh, we, we have there uh, on the website, the, the current um, schedule for the districting process, and we'll be updating that and hopefully soon um, with respect to the ex- the extension that council has sought. And, and that concludes my remarks, Madam Mayor and Council, and Liz and I, and the rest of the staff team are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have a question that I probably should already know the answer to, but I don't. Um, and that is, in Petaluma, do we have a residency requirement for people who want to run for city council or mayor? And if so, how long is that and would that also apply to the districts?
It does. Um, to be eligible to, to be council members, um, people have to be electors of, of the city, they have to reside within the city's corporate boundaries and eligible to, 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 um, to vote and to run. And that's, those criteria are in the, in the charter and also in state law. Um, there's not, I don't believe there's a minimum time period required, but I'd have to double check that. I can double check that and get back to the council.
Okay.
But um, to run, um, people must be electors of the city.
Okay. And so, and that would apply to districts?
Yes.
No, the districts, yes.
The districting doesn't change that.
Okay. But you don't know whether or not there's a, uh, that you have to be a resident for X months before you apply?
I, I don't believe there is, but, but we'll, we'll confirm that for the council.
Yeah, I'm, I'm clearly just thinking of carpet-bagging uh, um, notion that, that comes up, that people move into districts in order to run for, for office. But um, you know, if, I, I just don't know if that's going to be an issue or not. But it certainly has already been brought up, so I thought I would raise it. So um, in order of hands up, it's Vice Mayor Barnacle, Councilmember Healy, and Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three questions. Um, so um, I, I, I think we're moving forward. So when will the, the COI form and the Districter be live for the folks in Petaluma?
So if we do go forward, um, like you suggest, um, as soon as possible, uh, we've been working with your staff, um, who are very diligent and on top of things to get things up. As uh, Eric mentioned, they already have a website up. Um, I'm not sure, they might already have a COI form up. Um, if not, they could put that up pretty quickly. Districter is going to take a little bit more time. We need to confirm, um, it is, you know, um, a third party. So we would have to get their contract um, and get it up and running. So usually two to three weeks.
Okay. Um, so one of the things that you mentioned was around continuity. And um, we have a river, a train track, and um, a highway that all sort of cut our city in different ways. Um, I, I assume that's a challenge, but um, do you have, like, do you have any insights into that? How that might um, impact our, our process or our outcomes?
So oftentimes, um, highways, rivers, things like that, train tracks, act as natural barriers, natural lines. Um, so often we'll look to them to sort of place the lines there um, because they do separate communities often. Um, but uh, I would have to clearly listen to what community members say and confirm whether that's true or not. Um, so we, there would be an extensive outreach campaign to reach out to the public and get a sense of where they think those divisions should be.
Great. And then the, the final one was, um, I noticed that there was uh, some stipulation that we had to be within ten percent in terms of uh, people. Um, how do we? How, there are certain parts of Petaluma that I anticipate will see more growth um, in the coming, let's say, ten years than others. And if we, if in the process of doing this or in the process of building out our, our coming general plan, we become out of uh, you know, out of compliance with that ten percent um, threshold, do we have to go through the pro- districting process again sooner? Or should we try and account for that um, like, future planned growth during this process?
So you're in luck. This happens once every ten years after the census. So really what we're doing is we're looking at a snapshot on what the population was like on April first, twenty twenty. And so that's the population we will be looking at when we uh, make equal population districts. Um, so you could theoretically account for additional growth if you know for sure. Uh, you know, you have good evidence for that. Um, but uh, we do sort of um, uh, caution you against that. Um, it has to be a good reason to anticipate future growth if we're basing the districts off of the twenty twenty population.
Great. Thank you. That's all for me.
Okay, I think I lost counsel. No, they, did you take your hand down, Councilmember Healy? Okay. Uh, Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you very much. Um, no, I, I may have missed, but we're, we're making an assumption of the uh, number of districts. And is there some um, logic to using on how many districts get formed?
That is up to you. Uh, it's up to the city council. Um, I imagine you would want to hear public comment on how many members as well.
We're not tipping our hand to the public as to how to map, per se. I mean, do they want to map in fours or sixes or eights or?
I believe it should be odds.
Is that, well, and that's a very good point, too. So is all of that to be the public input we want? We have them make a decision about whether there's a citywide mayor, like many of the cities that have gone to districts do, or whether all seats are all, you know, it, it, what are we going to put in our service?
Eric, did you want to take that one?
W- w- well, one, one thing I'll say is that the, the um, the Voting Rights Act implies one um, member per district, um, and each member in a district. Um, although there have been um, th- this situation of, of say, six members and an at-large mayor has been upheld, both accepted by Mr. Shankman, upheld by the courts, um, as being satisfactory as a districting transition. But um, I, I think, um, and you know, we'll, we'll have more conversation about it. But I, I think, you know, on its face, the Voting Rights Act suggests.
Perfect. Yeah, so will we need to make that decision before posting up the community of interest mapping softwares and things?
Uh, no, we, we'll, they'll be.
Take all input?
It's going to be, right, a lot of input coming in. Um, and, and we'll be trying to provide feedback for the public in terms of the, the requirements and the options to help inform that input so that, so that it's um, so that it's usable and it's targeted toward what the, what the statutory requirements are.
So um, I'm assuming we have the census data we need for this round? And, and I, I haven't seen it, but we must have over sixty percent, maybe sixty-five percent of population living on the east side. Should we indicate that the districting should be sixty-five percent drawn on the, the east side of Petaluma? Do we tip our hand to that census data we know so that people make their community of interest fit where we're going to need to on this population split?
So um, not necessarily. Uh, we definitely want to hear as much testimony from the public as possible. Uh, and we try to accommodate for as many COI communities out there as possible. It's not always possible, though. So um, remember, we do have to follow all of the traditional districting principles. Um, but that being said, um, it's uh, sorry, I've sort of lost my track of thought. Can you say, can you repeat that last?
Sure. Well, i- i- it, it, it won't be possible to say, I mean, in, in the end, our pop- population is evenly split among the jargon most used, oh, east side or oh, west side. So we'll have to tip our hand to the public just getting engaged in this.
I think.
You know, that, that the census says really this or that.
I think it's a little too early to say, you know, how these lines are going to be placed. Uh, we definitely have to balance the qualitative and quantitative data. So we have the census data, and now we're going to need the uh, input from the community and from you all. Um, so it's, it's a little too soon to say, to rely completely on the uh, the numbers without hearing from the public.
Right. Liz, is, is it not true that um, we'll typically provide as part of the process um, some population information by census tract? So the members of the public can see that?
Yeah.
And Kevin, to your point about the, what we've seen as some of the traditional, what we've, has been viewed as traditional geographic boundaries in Petaluma, there, it's a little bit nuanced, um, and we're all learning this together, me, me and the rest of the staff team. This is our first districting process in Petaluma, um, all of us at the once. But um, you can tell from those criteria that, that it's not just the boundaries, but whether there's communication across them, because it, that may exist in ways that are helpful and important in terms of preserving communities of interest. And, and even, you know, maybe not entrenching those boundaries depending on what the will of the, of the council and, and the public is. So that's another reason why I think um, providing all the helpful information we can for the council and the public while maximizing the input is going to be, I think, help, help the council um, guide, guide it as optimal uh, a, a process for the community as possible in terms of keeping important communities of interest.
Right. That's interesting that uh, uh, you know, I mean, you're, you're right that we're trying to hold a community, but um, we spent so much time trying to break down these barriers of uh, you know, east side, west side or uh, uh, and here we are, entrenching them um, by districting. But um, I mean, I think I heard you right, there's hundreds of cities in California have been challenged by Shankman and, 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 and no one has um, you know, not gone this way when challenged. So.
There are two, there are two cities that have uh, written strong letters of opposition of large Southern California cities that have not been um, sued. Um, there's the Santa Monica case on review um, in the Court of Appeal. Or I'm sorry, before the Supreme Court, it's, it's already been in the Court of Appeal um, that will provide some guidance, um, probably not in time for our timeline. But there's been no successful um, opposition um, that is, that is, uh, on the basis of showing an absence of, you know, racially polarized voting in the community. So, but, but this is still really about, you know, recognizing, as I noted in my remarks, that, that this, this has been in response to a demand letter from Mr. Shankman, and recognizing the strict timelines under the CVRA, even with an extension. Um, I, I, from our part, I would suggest that it, it's still the most important thing to make sure that the council exercises its, its, its maximum ability to provide for um, uh, a districting plan that, 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 that fits for this community and, and maximizes participation of the Petaluma community in the electoral process.
Right. I think we have a word cut for us. And one of the questions I wanted to um, confirm, so this is about population base, not voter turnout. So um, if you have the same number of potential, well, of citizens, but of, of voting age, one has a sixty. one has a 60% turnout, one has an 80% turnout. You know, a council person will come in with much lower vote count, even though his population base, or their population base would be the same. So it doesn't guarantee that the voters have equal representative, voting, the actual voter turnout represented on the council versus the population is represented on the council.
It means they have an equal opportunity, though. It's up to them to, to exercise it.
The voters. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, I'm just going to call the next person. Go ahead if you want to say something more.
I was just going to say, this is established through precedent under the Supreme Court, and that's why it is census data, not voters. Just to tie that into a bow.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Healy, followed by Councilmember King.
Thank you. So I, first, I have two things. First was a question for the city attorney in section nine of the city charter, which specifies that the elective officers of the city shall be a mayor and six council members. So I can see where we could be having a discussion about whether we have seven districts for seven council members or six plus a directly elected mayor citywide. But I don't see how we can cast the net any broader than that without putting a charter amendment before the voters. So I don't know if I'm missing something there. And then in terms of communities of interest, I guess I'll just throw this one out. This is one that struck me as a possibility, and Liz, you can say if this is something that would work. It seems to me that we could have a, a community of interest consisting of the mobile home parks along the North McDowell corridor, which then jumps over the highway at the north end of town over a couple of cross-town connectors and picks up one more mobile home park on, on the west side. Is, would that be the kind of thing that we, we could be looking at?
Definitely. Yeah, I actually encourage us, as we go down the process, to sort of map that out so we know where that is. Because we have mapped mobile home communities in the past, just to know where they are. So we don't accidentally split them up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember King.
Thank you. My understanding is that, for example, if we go with six districts, they have to have more or less equal population. So my, my question really deals with the tools that are going to be provided to the public online as to demographic data. Because if someone's going to try to submit a proposed set of districts, they're going to need to have a tool that says, all right, you, you got it close enough to 10,000 all the way around versus, you know, you've got one district with 12,000 people and another with 8,000 people, which isn't going to work. Will, will they have that tool?
Yes. So Districter is wonderful. It was created by folks at Tufts University with the specific goal in mind to have everyday people draw districts on their own. So what this tool does, it allows the public to see what the ideal population is for each district. It tells them when they hit that mark. And it also tells them the deviation. So they know if they're under 10%. They can also look at the population, the demographics, and see the breakdown of what they drew. I'm happy to present Districter at a future meeting. If you would like to see how it's used, it's something that we demonstrate to the public regularly. So folks at home know how to use the tool themselves.
I, I would, I would think that at one of our future meetings, that would be something, something quick because it's probably user-friendly, I assume. But that may be the, the, the best way to get usable on that limited subject area, usable information from the public. Well, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, I see you right up. By spirit, did you take your hand down?
Yeah, I was just going to say, maybe there might be some sort of video tutorial for, for that intro, too, I'm sure. So.
Whichever kind?
Absolutely. We absolutely are going to need some training, for sure. Thanks.
Okay, so I don't see any more hands up among the council members, so I'm going to see if our city clerk has received any correspondence on this item.
Madam Mayor, we received two public comments prior to the meeting, which are posted with the agenda packet.
Thank you very much. And then I'll ask our moderator to see if there's anyone in the, among the attendees who would like to speak to this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to share my screen real quick. And before we get into the public comment, just point out that folks wanting to see the website for themselves can do a quick search for district elections on our website. And it'll come up to this page. And it has all these resources that we've been talking about. And, you know, the B part of the process tab talks about what districts mean to you, what would you consider to be a district within Petaluma? Is there a park, school, major road, or intersection nearby? All these questions that we're looking, we're seeking input on here. So just encourage you to go to our website and look for that way to get involved there. And it also has other things about the schedule and notifications. So just wanted to point out that resource for everybody.
Thank you, Patrick. And that is also available in Spanish?
The website, that page. Ingrid, chime in here, but I believe we can translate any page on our website based on language.
Correct. That's correct.
Perfect. Excellent. Thank you, staff. That's great. Okay, so now we go to the moderator to open public comment on this item.
Yep. Thank you for indulging me, Mayor. So members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please raise your hand in Zoom. You'll be called on in turn. You all have three minutes in which to give your comments. And I see three, two hands raised currently. First is John Crowley, followed by Andean Kilker. John, you may unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is John Crowley. I live in Petaluma. I haven't heard any reference to ranked choice voting in any of the considerations this evening. And I'd just like to make sure that that is considered. Not introducing ranked choice voting as part of redistricting or having district elections is can lead us down the road where you'll get candidate elected on, say, for example, 20% of the approval from the electorate, which really isn't the best demonstration of democracy. There are some probably technical parts that need to be overcome. Although the Snoke County Register Voters has verified that the new machines obtained by Snoke County are very capable of handling ranked choice voting. So I'd just like to see that any further. I enjoyed the presentation from Redistricting Partners very much, indeed. But if there's further work, I'd love to see ranked choice voting as being part of that. I did have two questions. One, I was a little bit unclear as to what the transition might be if some of the council members have two years in their term. What happens if it's suddenly introduced into a districting? And then the other question I have about the, if the mayoral race is not large, wouldn't that technically go against this, this letter that we received from the, this, this attorney? As also kind of not looking after districts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Next speaker is Andean Kilker. You may unmute and begin your comments.
Hi, Mayor. Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, and general public. We are East Petaluma residents of a newly formed group called the East Petaluma Alliance. The organization was formed to amplify the voices of historically underrepresented residents. EPA's mission is to bring neighbors together to create a healthy, equitable, and climate-resilient community. We believe that the lawsuit against the city for violating the California Voting Rights Act provides the city with a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to fix our broken political system and build back better. To that end, we have a few recommendations that we would ask you to consider. First, we ask you to wholeheartedly support the district-based voting system, not just to evade a legal threat, but to embrace a more representative, equitable, and democratic, democratic future. Historically, the city council has been dominated by residents living on the west side. We strongly believe that district-based elections will help distribute power throughout Petaluma and bring forth a new group of diverse candidates. Second, we recommend that district-based voting is also a ranked choice or single transchangeable voting system. We believe that either of these systems combined with district voting will provide, will powerfully promote representative outcomes and discourage negative campaigning. Finally, we recommend reducing financial barriers to entry for many would-be Petaluma City Council candidates. To accomplish this, we suggest bringing back public financing of campaigns and council pay for city members. We believe that lowering the cost to run a campaign and providing adequate compensation once elected helps open doors to good candidates who might otherwise not run for the city council. We believe we have an unprecedented opportunity to fix the broken system and build a strong representative, equitable, and democratic system. A healthy democracy is a foundation that our community desperately needs. We are facing enormous challenges such as racial and economic inequity, environmental degradation, and climate change. As the city website tells in this, this is the moment that we're asking you to walk the talk. And as Manuel Marianda sings in Hamilton, please don't throw away your shot. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Sorry, paused a moment to think about that song. Next speaker is Susan Kirks, followed by Lina Hoshino. Susan, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Thank you. Um, this is a very interesting topic. And I think I agree about embracing the opportunity to broaden awareness and potential participation from many areas in Petaluma that may feel and may be underrepresented. When I was a candidate for city council in the November 2020 election and we analyzed my results, even though I came in last, I really appreciated votes from all over Petaluma. My votes were distributed equally northeast, south, and west. And for me, that was notable because while I live on the west side, I actually am on the east side of Petaluma more frequently than I am actually in, on the west side. So it was, it was a wonderful experience. And I want to encourage anyone who's thinking about entering from if we go to a district-based election process. I really appreciate this group that's been formed in East Petaluma. I think we're looking at setting up a future for representation in Petaluma from our residents who may be thinking about moving here, who are not yet residents. And I would like to see diversity in our, in our elected officials. And I just think we have just a wonderful opportunity. I also support the, the ranked choice voting discussion. I think that's something we should definitely seriously enter into and consider. And, um, yeah, I just, I, I, I do agree. It's an opportunity. And I really look forward potentially to participating in an election process with this new district setup. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Susan. Next speaker is Lina Hoshino. Lina, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Good evening. I'm a member of East Petaluma Alliance, east side resident. And I'm a west side business owner. I'm, I'm also an Asian American, a group with very little visibility and representation in this city. I took part in the redistricting process for county supervisor, very similar to the process Liz from Redistricting Partner have talked about. And I'm very excited for what's to come in Petaluma. I'm thrilled that the city is considering transitioning from the current racially and effectively economically and geographically discriminatory at-large voting system to a more equitable form of district-based voting. And perhaps combined with other forms of voting, too. My question today is, are you doing enough to educate the city residents so they know that they can engage meaningfully? Most people I've talked to don't even know what district voting, based voting is, or what is, what is being discussed in this city tonight. It's not something most of us going on about our lives think about every day. But it underpins democracy and it's incredibly, it's an incredibly consequential thing. People need to be informed and have a say through the process, including deciding how to draw the district line. I saw that you set up Spanish and English website dedicated to district voting posting up and posting updates, which I appreciate. But what about languages, language accessibility for people who don't speak English or Spanish? ASL users, for instance. With instantaneous online translation tools and online interpretation services, it should be possible to have the city website have a better language access for those who need it. Also, have you thought about reaching out to teachers? What a great educational opportunity for students to learn about civics and government. If I weren't paying attention, I probably would have missed tonight's public hearing meeting. Please do more to get the word out. The rest of us in the room could help as well. Tell your neighbors and friends and colleagues and family members that transition should be as transparent, democratic, and inclusive as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Lina. And Veronica O. has raised her hand. Veronica, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to share a website that I found, and I found this on, on the agenda. It's called Fair Vote. And it basically goes through ranked choice voting and, and its success. Basically, it says that there's more voter turnout that everyone who goes and into that sort of system, whether or not it's chosen to do the, the districting or not. But that there's a huge academic endorsement for it. And it's just an effective system and more democratic. So I just wanted to alert everyone for that website, fairvote.com. And it has some really interesting data to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. Next speaker is Janice Kater Thompson. Janice, you may unmute and begin your comments.
Thank you, Patrick. I think district elections may not create the diversity or equity that we think. But what I know is that you, as a council member and mayor, you be hard. Mayor gets $10 a meeting, the council gets $5 per meeting. And outside of these meetings, you're going to a lot of different meetings. And that goes back to, I just want to do a follow-up with what the mayor was saying as far as when you're running for mayor or running for council, what is the charter? Because it's my understanding that if you run for mayor, you can move into the city the same day as the paperwork is, you have to submit to running for mayor. And a council person, I thought you had to live in the city for six months. And I think it's really important to look at that and change that. And with that, I think we may need some charter changes. And that goes before the vote of the public. You deserve to be paid. It's, it's equitable to be paid. And 2021, we should not be paying our city council members $5 a meeting and the mayor $10 per meeting for all you do, whether we agree with you or if we don't agree with you. And so I think it's really important to start looking at the charter as you're moving toward district elections and putting this on the ballot so the public can actually vote for pay. And I'm not sure if, between the mayor and the council, how long you have to live here, if that has to be voted on by the public. But we could do it all at one time. And I think we're working, going in the right direction. But council pay is extremely important. If we want to get candidates to actually run, because it costs money to sit on that city council. And that is not fair, and that's not democratic for the council itself. So I'd like you to take that into consideration. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Janice. And that is the last hand. So I will turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and, or public comment. or public comment in the public hearing and bring it back to the council. And we'll go to Councilmember Fisher, then Vice Mayor Barnacle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the public doesn't have the benefit of the comments that we were making in closed session, and I know we're not supposed to talk about that, but I'm wondering if the city attorney can help us in educating the public about unpacking this, what's in our charter? And what needs to be changed by vote with the change of our charter versus this, what's before us now with districting, just to help educate the public in that regard?
If that's the will of the council, I'd be happy to address that. It's in a certain sense, it's not all that complicated. So basically, anything that's in the charter is a voter-imposed limit on the authority of the council. Because otherwise, the home rule power that it, the city has by virtue of being a charter city is just as extensive as the state's power with respect to municipal affairs, local affairs. So, so when the charter sets the, the very low salary that has already been mentioned, $10 per meeting for the mayor and five for the council members, and it's for a limited number of meetings during the month, that requires a vote of the people, of the voters to change that. The charter, as Councilmember Healy mentioned, prescribes seven seats on the council, and it doesn't say expressly other than to say those seats are all directly elected by the people, consist of six council member seats and a mayoral seat. And that's what gives us the separately elected mayor seat, that too set by charter. So the other thing that's fortuitous, if one is in favor of the district elections transition, is that our charter expressly authorizes transitioning to district elections. So that's not something that requires a charter amendment, but changing council member salaries would. So I don't know if there's more that you wanted me to address.
The ranked choice voting issue, that would be a charter amendment as well, right?
That would need some more research, I think. And I'm not trying to just skip that. Well, you know, I'm hearing the interest on the part of the public and the council wants us to pursue that further, we can research that further. It's, I don't have a quick answer for that, but it's an answerable question.
I think there's been enough questions for the council and the public to have an answer.
So you mean to investigate that?
There was one other question that was brought up by the public that I think fits into Councilmember Fisher's question, and that was about residency for people who are running for council or mayor. So I don't know if our charter is silent on that or, but it would be better if the public and the council members all knew the answer to that as well.
Sure. As I said, I don't think there's a minimum time requirement, but I will double-check that. I'll even try to do it in the background. Depending how long the meeting continues, I may have an answer.
Thank you. And so, did you have other questions? Okay, no, we're going on to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I too, I want to ask for a report on ranked choice voting. I want to make sure that's part of the next meeting. Also, I'd like the next meeting, if possible, to talk about how other cities have transitioned to this. I think Mr. Crowley raised a great point about existing terms and what that means and what the implications would be for, for the transition, how that might look. At the next meeting, I'd like to talk a bit more about what types of outreach are being performed and and how we're going to get people to these, these public hearings. And if there's other events, hear about those as well. Maybe, you know, we've been tabling it at Farmers Market for the drought. Maybe there's an opportunity to table around this as well to help, you know, raise awareness around it or something like that. I love the idea of getting teachers to educate the, you know, seems like a great high school civics project that's great and current. You know that I support pay for council members, and I'd like to see, you know, I've asked for future meetings to include scoped in such a way that we can address that as well. And then the final point that I'm hoping I get support from other council members on is for the next public hearing on this, can we move it up to start at like 6:30? Because if we really want people to participate, we've got to start this item at, you know, before 10 o'clock at night. If that's possible, I'd say we move it up to the start of the meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Postacay.
Yeah, I'll second that suggestion of Councilmember Barnacle or the Vice Mayor that it would be good to do more than one of these at an earlier time, I think. Also, I'm in favor of further discussion of ranked choice voting. And I think residency is going to be more important. I just know that in some cities that have done this, it looks really bad when all the sitting council members move as the new districts are announced, and it looks bad. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. And Councilmember Healy, followed by the City Manager, and then Councilmember King.
Thank you. So I'm comfortable including a conversation about ranked choice voting as part of this process. I've been looking at Section 11 of the Charter, which is the title eligibility of mayor and says councilman, I'll say council member. But to be eligible for the office of mayor or council member, a person must be a citizen of the United States and a qualified elector of the state of California and the city of Petaluma. So there is no time residence requirement. We've traditionally imposed that, I believe, by planning commissioners. I think it's one year, but we've never, so I think it would be a charter amendment to fuss with that. I can assure people I'm not moving. If that's what people are worried about, I'm going to be staying put on Kentucky Street. So don't fret about that. And I would like to have the council pay and the public financing issues, people wanting to pursue those decoupled from this districting process, and we can pursue those on a separate track, as those would both require charter amendments, which this does not. Thank you. Oh, the one thing, final thing I'd say is, I think we should shoot for being much closer than 10%. I think the 1% threshold for congressional districts should be our goal here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let council and the community know what its staff's intention to, if we're going to keep these public hearings on our regular council meeting evenings, then we would move that item up to the front of the meeting. But if we are able to secure the extension, then we were hoping that some of these public hearings would be standalone meetings, which would provide a little bit more space for public engagement.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember King?
Yes, just to comment on community engagement and outreach. I assume that these are going, that the information about district elections is going out in the community updates that are going out daily. You're nodding yes, so I, and a thumb up, okay. I mean, there's, that's, what's one good way. I don't know how many people read through them, but my recommendation is whatever else is going on, unless it's, you know, the wildfire or something like that, is that this be put to the top because this is this is really the most important decision we're going to be making, to change how we elect the council. And in the end, I think the greater the participation, the better, particularly in the mapping, you know, the mapping that you've described tonight. I was going to say, in terms of moving it up if we have a regular meeting, you know, if it's possible just to move the consent calendar and both council and public comment back so that we can have this. And so people don't have to wait till 10:30 where we are tonight to weigh in. I think that's, that would be something I would undoubtedly favor. And my last comment or question really is on ranked choice. If I'm not mistaken, I thought Eric had made a comment a while back vis a vis a concern that ranked choice voting might not be in compliance with the law that we're evaluating. So if I misunderstood that, that's, that's fine. And if that's the case, then we can have that discussion, but I want to be sure that we're we're not having a discussion that also creates a problem in setting up districts that are not in compliance with our civil rights laws. So that's my comment and question.
Should I address that, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So I'm sorry if I wasn't clear in that, Councilmember King. I think the comment you're referring to, I intended to mean that it's clear that ranked choice voting in and of itself doesn't satisfy districting. The question is, can we do districting incorporating ranked choice voting? And without having issues under the city's charter or potentially the mechanics of district formation. So I think that those are things that we'll need to look at so that we can address those. But I was only just noting that we couldn't just do ranked choice voting in lieu of districting and be in the safe harbor of the California Voting Rights Act.
Okay, I want to clarify that a little bit. Thank you, and appreciate it.
Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else's hand up. So at this time, thanks to everybody who participated. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Healy does still have this hand up. Sorry.
So thank you, Madam Mayor. So one last question. Did we want to have a conversation around the six districts versus seven districts issue? And provide maybe some initial guidance on that? My understanding, well, Eric, are either of those permissible under the California Voting Rights Act or is one more safely in the safe harbor than the other?
All right. I think the safest possible thing is to have as many districts as council members, but as I mentioned earlier tonight, there have been court-approved CVRA-compliant districting transitions consisting of council members and an at-large mayor.
Thank you. So given that, my preference would be six districts plus an at-large mayor, and I don't know if there's an interest in having a straw poll on that tonight.
Well, you know, at this point, it might be just something that we want to hear from the public. You know, it might be too early to limit things. And, you know, the more discussion we have about this, the better. And things can weed out rather than trying to set limits on what we're going to talk about. That's be my perspective.
Well, if I may, the concern would be we're now, I think, tasking the demographer to start drawing lines on maps, and if they don't know if they have six or seven, it kind of doubles the amount of work they need to be doing.
Well, we have one more pre-map hearing. And then, you know, if we get an extension, we'll have more flexibility with our scheduling, but it's up to the council as to whether...
Okay, well, I guess I would ask staff to let us know when we need to be providing that.
Okay, and just for the public, that meeting would be the 15th of November. From what I heard from seeing people nod and what our city manager said, I think we're going to follow the recommendation of our Vice Mayor to move that public hearing forward in the agenda, so it would be taken earlier. So just, so I guess that's a change to the tentative agenda that we already approved. So, Vice Mayor?
Yep. I guess my request on the next, just Councilmember Healy's comment about needing to give the demographer first in guidance is this, this staff report was sort of broad, and I think it was really sort of educated us on really to have us hear that presentation and get some initial questions answered. And my, my thought is that the next meeting is going to need to have us answering a few questions to provide that guidance. So just, you know, make sure that when we get the staff report that it's really clear, like what questions, you know, would be helpful for us to answer. And the sooner we can get those, the better, just to a lot of thought that goes into these things.
I do think that, yeah, I think that's good advice, and I think, you know, this is the first meeting. And, and, you know, it goes from the general to the specific. So we are on that path. And I think next meeting and next staff report will be more structured, and hopefully we'll have more people being able to provide information at our website that I had already checked myself. And it is, it is pretty good already. So it's, that information is now out there. So, okay, so unless there's any more comments by people on the council, and I'm not seeing any hands raised, we're going to close the public hearing, and this is the end of our agenda for tonight. So thanks, everybody, and we'll see you at the November 15th city council meeting. Good evening.
Night. Thank you.